I think that we have everybody that is scheduled to be here on time, so that's excellent. So I will call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. Okay, and the flag salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call? Vicki's on mute.
Mr. Callaguer. Ms. Darmo.
Here.
Mr. Doby. Mr. Doby. Okay, same. Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Cameron Nugian.
Yes.
Mr. Litwack.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
And Mr. Sister Keely.
A reading of statement of adequate notice, please.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given as follows. Advertising in the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on January 14th, 2021. Posting on school bulletin boards and main entrance doors on March 4th, 2021. Sending a notice to the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on March 3rd, 2021. Filing written notice with the Clerk of Delanco Township on March 3rd, 2021. And posting the notice electronically on the district website, www.delanco.com on March 3rd, 2021.
Okay, thank you. And now we will start the board member training with NJ SBA Representative Jesse Adams. The floor is all yours.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I did send out some handouts, and I know that your superintendent got them to you. Let me share my screen here real quick. Oh, I'm, I need sharing privileges, please.
Albert, are you able to? Okay, I think you might have the ability now.
All right. There we go. Let's see, where's all of the other windows? All right, so let's, what I want to do is I just touch on real quick about the, the handouts that I sent you. I believe there were five of them, so I just want to quickly walk through them so that you know what they are. One, one of them is the, the Code of Ethics. It's the same handout that you should have gotten when we did our ethics training, but, but we're talking goals. I mean, we're talking roles, responsibilities. That's, that's what the foundations of board governance is. So we include this as a handout because it's all tied to the School Ethics Act as well as the Code, Code, Code of Ethics. We also included a, one of our publications. It's a pamphlet that, that's available. It's, it's given out at different training programs. It's, it's one of the, one of the places it's given out is new board member orientation. And it's what does, who does what in public school governance? Very good pamphlet. You recommend you read it. It outlines roles and responsibilities, you know, as it relates to board members and the superintendent. I also included a, one charter this 2020. It's actually a 2019 SEC Commissioner case. We covered this in the Ethics Training, but I pulled this out to include because it is a social media case that a member was suspended for six months for their social media activity. So I just provide that as a reminder that, that you need to be careful in that arena. Then I also included this document called What the Board Should Know About Personnel, and we'll be talking about that later in the program. And then I also provided you a separate handout on setting the stage, which is in the presentation. I'll talk to it, but I like to give this as a separate handout to boards, basically, so they have it readily available as a tool for their, for their board business. So let me go to the presentation. This slideshow. Hopefully, everybody can see the openings, cover slide there, so let's get rolling. So. Let's talk about the difference between the roles of, of, the role of the superintendent and the board. So here's a basic question. How many board members does it take to change a light bulb?
Nine.
Harry says nine. Does anybody disagree with that? What's that? Five, okay? Well, Harry's throwing up multiple answers, right? Nine or five?
Subset of five through nine.
Zero.
I would say zero. That's not our job.
Okay, well, let's talk about that. The answer is zero, none. It's up to the board to say, let there be light. Once they've made that determination of what they want, light, it's up to the superintendent to decide what kind of light you're going to have, right? Is it going to be candlelight, neon, solar, incandescent? Superintendent makes that decision. That's part of the administrative responsibility. Brings that recommendation back to the board, and then it's up to the board to approve the purchase of the lights. And then superintendent makes sure they get installed, and then once they're installed, the board evaluates the quality of the light. We said let there be light. Did the superintendent and the administration meet the intent of the requirement that we laid out there? That's the evaluation. So that's a very oversimplified example of the difference between the board's role and the superintendent's role. So let's talk about the four functions of the Board of Education. I mentioned this in the Ethics Training because it, it, it comes out of the Code of Ethics. But there are four functions of a Board of Education. Policy, planning, oversight and appraisal, and two-way communication. Policy, you are a policymaking body. We talk about the what and the how, and we'll, we'll touch on that here in a couple of minutes. But you determine and tell your district what you want for the community, for the district as a whole, through your policies. So policy can be sometimes a boring part of your responsibility. I know some, there are some people who love to be on the policy committee because that's their, that's their thing. But it is one of the most important responsibilities you have as a board. Your policies are what you want as a board for your district. The superintendent's responsibility is to implement those policies. And through implementation, superintendent may have to develop regulations, may have to develop procedures, may have to develop operating processes in order to meet the intent and implement, and appropriately implement of the policy. So you should take your policymaking responsibility extremely seriously. Your second responsibility is planning. And what do I mean by planning? Every year, you're required to establish the district goals. That's part of your repla, your planning responsibility. What are you going to focus on in the next year? You need to plan for that. What are your board goals? If you establish board goals, that's part of your planning responsibilities. If the board, if the board has a strategic plan or develops a strategic plan, that's part of your responsibility as a board. Plan, budget, the budget process, budget planning is the board's responsibility. You don't, you don't actually create that budget. Your BA and your superintendent do the, the roll up the sleeves, what I call the real grunt work, putting that budget together. But the budget process is your planning responsibility. You're responsible for getting a budget that ends up being approved by the board to run the school year for the next year. Your superintendent and your BA are the ones who facilitate and develop and put those budgets together. They brief you, they discuss those with you. You, you, through those discussions, you modify, but that's all part of your planning responsibility. So, so you have a major role, and it is your, one of your more, one of your four main roles is planning for the future of your district. Your third function is oversight and appraisal. And what do I mean by that? You have oversight of the district. If you remember from the Code of Ethics, with the, the tenant says that you're not there to administer, but with, with you, between you and your fellow board members, you have to ensure that the district is being well-run. That's an oversight role. You don't run the day-to-day, you don't do the administration, you don't, you know, you don't pick what kind of light bulbs you are going to go in, into the district once you've determined that you want light. That's, you know, you set the, set the oversight responsibility and you assess, did we get what we asked for? You also have appraisal responsibility. The district, from a district overall perspective, the superintendent has a legal requirement to provide every employee in the district with a performance appraisal annually. You, as a board, you have responsibility for providing a performance appraisal for one, one employee, the one, the one employee that you're responsible for, the superintendent. All right, so, so that's your oversight and appraisal responsibilities. And then the fourth function is two-way communications. You're required to get information out to all of your stakeholders, and you should be bringing back the aspirations of your community as the elected officials. That's that two-way communication. We talked about this during the Ethics, Ethics Training. You guys have, your district sends communications out all the time. And anything that comes from a teacher, the superintendent, the BA going out is Board of Education communication. So you're fulfilling that, that outbound communication through all of the processes you have in your district. If you think you need to improve on them, you work with the superintendent to identify whether there are areas for improvement, and then the superintendent implements those, those changes that everyone agrees on. But that's your outbound of communication. As you hear of the, and learn of the aspirations of your district and your constituents, you should bring that back to your board, fellow board members and the superintendent so that you, hopefully, you're all staying on the same page of what the desires are of your community, your community for the children of the district. Now, that is not the rumor mill, okay? And I, I want to emphasize that. It's not the rumor mill, and you're bringing every single rumor. It's what are the, the things that you can improve on in the district to help the children moving forward? So it, there is a definite difference between the rumor mill and, and things that are aspirational that can help the district move forward. So, so those are your four functions as a board. So let's talk about setting the stage. This is one of, one of the handouts that I sent to you. We talk about two things when it comes to roles and responsibilities. We talk about the what and the how. Those two terms you should, you have put to your memory, what and how. What is desired, what the district, you know, what, though, the what for, for, for district purposes is what does the board want? You determine the what. How the what gets accomplished is the superintendent and his team's responsibility. You determine what you want. Superintendent figures out how he makes that happen, all right? So that's the difference. And this chart, I tell board members, if you have a nice little board folder that you keep with you all the time and you bring to board meetings, this document should be one of the documents in your board folder. The, the top line is the swim lane that belongs to the board. Well, the, not the very top line, the second line then. The second line belongs to the board. That's your swim lane. It's understanding the what. Across the top, very top, you see two, four, six areas of governance. Within those areas of governance, what you see on the line that belongs to the board are, are, are items that fall into the category of the board's thought process, the board, areas and questions that arrive, that can arrive from board members. These are the areas that fall in that oversight arena. So for example, if I look at personnel, it says standards and expectations, personnel policies, equity, hiring, training, evaluation, retention, policies associated with that, bargaining, recognition, staff recognition, and ensuring communication. Those are areas that belong to you, that, that those, those are areas where you set the what, you know, what your desires are. If you look at the next row, which is the how, that's the superintendent and his team's swim lane. So if, taking that same governance column under personnel, if you look at, under the how line, the administration line, you see hiring practices, interviews, recommend, recommendations, staff development and assignments, staff development programs, supervision, evaluation, recommendations for retention and tenure. Those are the superintendent's and his team's responsibilities. You don't make tenure recommendations. You don't do staff development. You know, that's the administrative line there. So what I tell boards is, if you're in a board meeting and you're going through agenda items, and it's in one of these areas, you know, planning, program, personnel, find, and you find yourself asking questions that fall in that lower line, the how line, you're out of your swim lane. You're, you're now administering, your questions are administering questions. You need to raise your game up, back up to that upper level and frame your questions to be in that how arena. That's the difference between your role from an oversight perspective and the superintendent's role in a administration getting the job done scenario. So use this as a tool to help you hopefully stay in your swim lane so that you're not falling into asking administrative, administering questions where you become, where you start to become micromanaging things that you should not be involved in because ultimately that ends up being a violation of the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act. So use this as a tool to help you stay in your swim lane, which will keep you out of trouble. And like I said, you'll avoid a, a personal audience with the, the SEC up in Trenton, right? So let's talk about some scenarios. And, and I'm going to go through 10 scenarios here, and we're going to, you know, I'm going to ask you, you know, is this your role? And then, and we'll see what, what your answers are. So the first scenario, the Our Town Board of Education has successfully passed its elementary school building referendum, and construction on the school has begun. Dan Rollins, a board member who in his private life runs a large construction company, has begun visiting the construction site every day to speak with the construction manager and check on the progress of the project. Is this your role? And does anybody think it is your role? The answer is, it, it is not your role. The board has typically in a construction project, a referendum is approved, you have, you have, the business administrator has that responsibility to manage the project. You, the board may have even hired a project manager, a company to be the project manager that the BA will work with, and that project manager will keep, keep the construction on, on track. Dan Rollins has expertise, right? As a, because he has his own construction firm, you know, he's got a lot of expertise, but he does not have the authority to go onsite to check what's going on. That is a violation of the code. He's taking personal, private action that could compromise the board. How could it compromise the board? Here's a good example. He's on the site, on the job site. He's looking at something, and he says, you know what? In my company, we wouldn't have done it that way. You know, and he tells the foreman, you know, we, you know, this, this should have been done, you know, this way, and here's the way, you know, you should do it. And he leaves. Construction manager says, okay, that was a board member. All right, so he, they redo the work to match the way the board member said that it should be done. BA, a couple of weeks later, the BA gets a bill for a change order for $100,000 because of the work they did, because Dan told them this is the way he would do it in his company, and that's what he would expect. So they said, okay, the board gave direction, we did the work. Here's the change order, pay us, board. Big problem, right? So here's a perfect example of a board member overstepping his responsibility, doing something he shouldn't have done, and taking private action that compromised the board and cost the taxpayers. Second scenario, in executive session, the majority of the Board of Education decides to support the superintendent's recommendation to fire its extremely popular football coach because of his recent unprofessional and unsportsmanlike behavior following a disappointing loss to a big rival. The next day, Ed Reed, a member of the board who strongly disagrees with the decision, calls his best friend John, whose son is on the football team, and tells him about the board's decision. Ed encourages John to bring the team and their parents to the next board meeting to try to get the board to change their mind. Is that appropriate? Is there anybody on the board who thinks it is appropriate? Don't be shy, speak up. It is not appropriate, right? Number one, where did this conversation take place? In executive session. So it's confidential, right? And until the next agenda comes out with that most, with that action on the agenda, it stays confidential, right? Until the meeting where that action item is going to show up on the agenda. So number one, Ed breached confidentiality. So there's, there's a violation of the tenant, I think it's tenant G for confidentiality. Plus, he took private action. That, do you think it's going to compromise the board? How many people do you think is going to be at that next meeting? You're going, that board's going to have a packed house. And everybody's going to come to the, for public comment at the podium to blast the board for the, for, you know, putting this kind of an action on, and you got, and the board was going to catch a lot of grief, and it's going to be a really bad night. So Ed basically has compromised the board, right? Put the board in a compromising position. So here's a perfect example of, of a situation that, you know, no board wants to be in. Definitely inappropriate. Scenario three, at the beginning of the annual budgeting process, the Our Town Board of Education meets with the superintendent and the business administrator, and they discuss and set parameters for the budget. Is this your role?
Yes.
Who thinks, anybody think it is?
Yes.
I heard one yes.
Yes.
The actual, actually it is, right? Part of your responsibility is the budget planning process. And one of the first things every board should do is sit down with the BA and the superintendent and discuss what are the budget parameters that the board is looking at for this year. For example, the board, obviously, you can go up to a 2% increase. Board may say this year, we, one of the parameters we want to set for the budget, we want no more than a 1.5% increase in the overall budget. That's a budget parameter. Have a conversation, but you know, the idea is if, if board has some desires for that budget for the next fiscal year, that's the time to make those parameters, have that discussion, and identify those parameters to the superintendent and the business administrator. Because you don't want them to go off, do all the work it takes, and it's a lot of work to take to get to that first draft of the budget and bring it back to the board for the first budget work session, and have the board at that time throw all these things that they were thinking about on the table. And now that, now the BA and the superintendent have to go back to the drawing board to incorporate these, to, to incorporate these parameters in to see what the impact is. By having that discussion up, they understand what your parameters are. They will build a budget to meet those parameters. And oh, by the way, they will also be able to tell you, if you go to, for example, the example I used was a, instead of a 2% increase in the, in the budget, no more than a one and a half percent, superintendent will be able to tell you, by doing that, here's what was impacted. Negative, well, here are the negative impacts of this parameter, and you now have a clear picture as a board to make a decision. Do you want to stick with that parameter or not? How does it negatively impact your ability to provide a thorough and efficient education to the students? So those are the things that you'll get feedback on. So yes, it is appropriate to, for the board to meet with the, with the superintendent administrator in your planning role to talk about parameters. The next one, Claire Murray, a member of the board, is in the produce section of the supermarket. When two of her neighbors come up to her and tell her that their daughters have told them that their third grade teacher, Mrs. Smith, spends part of every school day talking and texting on her cellphone while she is in her classroom with her students. To calm the, yeah, the, her, her neighbors down, Claire promises to investigate the situation and make sure that it doesn't continue. Is that appropriate for Claire to have done and for Claire to have promised?
No.
Yep, she's taken, she's made personal promise, taken a, and basically a private action. These folks have a complaint. The last tenant of the Code of Ethics says you can't do anything about that complaint as a board member or as a board until the administration has had a chance to look at it. So to promise that you're going to, as a board member, investigate it and, and make sure it doesn't continue is, is, is a, is not the right thing to say. The right thing should have been, let, and let me tell you how to use the chain of command and coach them on who to contact to address this concern. So definitely inappropriate to try and solve the action yourself. Definite violation of tenant, the tenant J of the Code of Ethics, and it will definitely get you in trouble. Next, scenario five, the Board of Education holds its meetings on the first and third Tuesday of the month. Board members receive their board packets on the Friday preceding the meetings. Bob Martin, a member of the board, in reading his packet over the week, weekend reveals, but believes that he has found an error in one of the proposals that the board is supposed to vote on Tuesday evening. To make sure that everyone on the board is involved, he decides to wait until the meeting to point out the error and ask for clarification. Is that inappropriate for a board member to do? Is that part of your role as a board member? I see, I see, I see folks shaking their heads, no.
Yeah. He, he should let, he should let somebody know, but not at the meet. He should let them know as soon as he sees it.
Exactly. This is, this is part of the board dynamics, this is part of board teamwork, right? You see something, you should bring it to the attention of the superintendent or the business administrator. They can look into it, and if there is an error, then the, the superintendent BA can send an, an email out to the full board saying, hey, on this proposal, there was an error, the corrected information is attached. Now, everybody has the same information. They have the correct information, and, and the board can now move on Tuesday to take action. By, if the, if, if the member had waited until that board meeting, number one, it might have looked like an, I got you moment for, you know, that the board members putting the superintendent and the BA on report because there's something wrong. So that's perceived as an I got you. But also, if it is, if there is an error or something's wrong, and this is an important proposal that you nearly, you can't, and now you can't take action on it, you got to table it and, and you know, postpone it to another meeting, or you may have to call a special meeting to, to act on this because you got to get the correct information. That action is now delayed, something that might be very important for the district. So this is one of those teamwork items. You know something, bring it to the attention of superintendent, the business administrator. They will look into it, and they will correct it and make sure that correction gets out to the rest of the board so that, so that everything can move smoothly at your board meeting. Number six, Lisa Watson, a board member of, on the, on the Our Town Board has received multiple calls complaining about the behavior of a teacher at the middle school. Although she refers each of the callers up the chain of command, she also calls the superintendent to alert him of the issue. Is that appropriate? I see a lot of people shaking their head, yes. I see a lot of people shaking their head, yes. Yeah, that's one of those, the person did exactly what they should have done. They, they coached the person to use the chain of command. Told them, probably told them what policy to follow. And, and helped them, tell them in the name of the person they should call. So they helped them use the chain of command. Then they picked up the phone and gave a heads up to superintendent, hey, not sure if it'll get to your level. I told so and so had this problem. I referred her to the principal or the supervisor. But just wanted to give you a heads up in case it works its way up to your level. And typically the superintendent will contact the, the principal and say, hey, just a heads up. You may be getting a call from a parent about a problem, you know, board member referred them to the chain of command. So just. That's appropriate. Very appropriate. That's part of the board team process, right? That's good board team teamwork. Okay? Number seven. The elementary, the R-Town Elementary School needs a new assistant principal. Because the superintendent is new, the board decides they're going to read all the applications. And do the interviewing of all of the candidates for the position. Is that appropriate? The only interview process that you have responsibility for as a board is the superintendent when you're hiring a superintendent. All other hiring activities belong to the superintendent and is the superintendent's responsibility. The board is definitely out of their swim lane by taking that, by insisting on taking that responsibility. Number eight, a board member, Elizabeth Gonzalez, a board member on the board is very concerned about the district math scores. She's heard a lot of talk about a new miracle math program that's being advertised on television. She calls the superintendent and asks superintendent to research that math program. Prepare a report comparing that program with the district's current math program and the math programs used in neighboring districts, districts. Is that appropriate?
No.
Nope, because one of the tenants says is that the authority rests in the board. So a couple of things here, this is private action being taken by this board member directing the superintendent to do something. When individual board members have zero authority, superintendent doesn't work for in a nine-member board, doesn't work for nine bosses. Superintendent works for one boss, the Board of Education. So in this case, you know, this is inappropriate for the person, you know, what, there are, there are correct ways to handle something like. That board member has an idea, wants, wants it to be looked into. There's a couple of ways to do it. One. If, if it's, this, this could be a curriculum item, right? So if you have a curriculum committee, board members should call the curriculum chair and say, hey, I saw this great math program. I'd like to ask the committee to look into this in, in your next committee meeting, add it to the agenda. Committee chair adds it to the agenda, superintendent, curriculum director are part of the committee meeting. They talk about it. And if there's research that needs to be done, the committee, committee turns the superintendent on to getting that research done. Brings it back to the committee. They talk about it and if it's worth, if it's worth it. They're gonna make a recommendation to the board. That's the clean way to get it done. Another way to do it. Every board, I'm like, I can't say every board, but typically boards have a new business section on their agenda. If a board member wants to bring up an idea like this. When the board president asks, is there any new business? There's the, there's an opportunity for a board member to bring something up. Now, what I will say is you don't want that to be an I got you moment either. Because here's an opportunity, if you know you're going to, you're gonna want to bring that up during new business, let the board president know. Let the superintendent know, I'm going to be bringing up this new math program I saw as a, as something that I think the board. Should have the district look into at, and I'm gonna bring it up under new business. That's a heads up to the board president as well as superintendent because the superintendent may, may actually go off and do some research anyway. So that he's prepared for the conversation that is gonna come up in new business. And instead of just a conversation where, you know, the superintendent's hearing it for the first time. Superintendent may be able to add some information to that conversation and then the board may say, you know what? This sounds like something we should look into. Let's give it to the curriculum committee to go off and work. All right, so that's another way to do it and get something brought, you know, without, without violating the code of ethics. So those two examples there. Number nine. Former teacher at, as a former teacher at the high school. A Board of Education member, Kate Arthong, is often approached by the teachers. Because she knows they are more comfortable with her than with the superintendent, she encourages them to come to her with their problems and concerns. Is that appropriate? Everybody's shaking their head, no, it's not appropriate, right? Same, same principle. If they come to you with concerns or problems, you need to refer them to the chain of command. They need to bring them up to their principal supervisor. If, if someone brings a concern to you, heads up, help them use the chain of command and then. Then give the superintendent a heads up. If it's a teachers association member and they have a complaint or concern. You refer them back to their, their membership, to their membership leadership. Because every contract has a grievance process, right? How complaints, concerns get handled, you need to follow the contract if it's a, if it's a represented staff member. So this is important to understand. Don't cross that line. And then the last scenario, Jim Behringer. And a board member knows that New Jersey state law. Requires that all curriculum meet the standards set out in the New Jersey student learning standards. In order to ensure that their curriculum meets those standards. He decides to go to the elementary school and question teachers and administrators about the implementation of the curriculum. And whether they believe that it's meeting the standards. Is this appropriate?
No.
Definitely no, right? Number one. Doesn't have the authority to just enter schools. Like I said, you have no more authority than any other member of the public, so you need to follow the policies. There is a visitation policy that says, you know, how a board, how any person gets into the school. Number two, going to the school for your child is one thing. You sign in, you go to whatever conference or whatever you're doing as a parent. That's different than coming as a board member, signing in, wanting to do board business. You, unless the board has given you the authority. To do that, you cannot do that. So, so this is important to understand. You know, quite, you know, you will get yourself in big time trouble trying to do something like that and going into districts and into, into the school buildings. All right, so those are 10 scenarios. Hopefully the different scenarios illustrate. The elements of what really are your roles as a board member, things you can and cannot do. Things you need to keep in the back of your mind as, as things are occurring so that you don't. Cross that line and step on a landmine that'll get you in trouble. So let's talk about personnel. Let me, I'm gonna stop sharing this and take and, and bring up the document that I talked about. One of the documents that I sent to you. Let's see. Give me one second to find the right application. Closed a bunch of my applications, that would make it easier. Here we go. All right. Let me share this and I'm gonna take you to this document. Hopefully you can read it. If not, I can increase the font. Let me see, let me just take it up a little bit so that you, is that? If anybody can't read that or see that, let me know and I'll raise it up again. Otherwise I'll get rolling. We're gonna, we're gonna take a quiz. So let's talk, question one. All non-tenured teaching staff must receive notice of renewal or non-renewal by May 15th. Is that true or false? I heard it true. Anybody disagree? All right, the answer is actually true. And the point you need to remember is that by law. Boards are required to approve the list of employees to be offered contracts at a board meeting by May 15th every year. Question two, while the board must have the superintendent's recommendation to hire a new staff member. They do not need the superintendent's recommendation to rehire. Is that true or false? It's kinda quiet.
I think it's false. He has all recommendations.
Somebody, somebody gave a false. The answer is false. The board must have the superintendent's recommendation to hire or rehire any staff member. In essence, when it comes to personnel, hire, fire, transfer, et cetera, et cetera. You need the superintendent's recommendation. That's important. Number three, board members may see staff files. That's personnel files and evaluations at any time for any reason. True or false? I'm hearing false. Anybody think true? The answer is false. Board members may only see staff files and evaluations. When they are asked to make a decision that affects that staff member's employment in the district. They may only see those portions of the employee's personnel file directly pertaining to the decision that is being made. For example, we talked about the list of renewal of staff. You get that list in your, in your packet and you look at it and you say, okay, I've got a concern with one of the staff members. Because you're going to be voting on this and it impacts the employment of those folks on that list. You can ask the superintendent, say, I'd like to see the evaluations of employee X. You would, the super, you would arrange, you'd make an appointment with the superintendent, you'd go into the office. Superintendent would pull that personnel folder of that employee, pull the evaluations out, show them to you. You could review those, ask questions. You can't make copies or anything of that nature, but you're allowed to see them and ask any questions you have. And then they go back in the file, boom, you're done and you, and you can leave. But because you are, you have to vote on something that impacts that employee's employment. You have a right to ask to see the evaluations. And so that's important, that's, that's, that's important to understand. Otherwise, you don't have any right to see anything in those folders on, on a normal basis. So it's important to understand that. Now, one of the things I'll point out. That in, if, if your superintendent's coming to you with recommendations for tenure charges on an employee. You're probably gonna see just about everything in that employee's folder as part of the tenure process. But other than a tenure process, you're limited in what you can see in the folder. And only under certain circumstances where your decision may impact the employee, employment of that employee. Number four. Board members must support the superintendent's staffing recommendations. True or false?
False.
False. I hear that was said very loudly, boy. That's actually false and that's correct. Board members are not required to support the superintendent's staffing recommendations. But they may not base their decisions on arbitrary and capricious reasons. Code of Ethics says you're going to vote. To appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. Once you have that recommendation, you're required to consider it. But then in the end, you need to make an informed vote that you can live with. All right, item, question five, board members should solicit input on all non-tenured staff members. Prior to making a decision on rehiring. True or false? False, I, I think I heard somebody say true. But it's, it actually is false. It isn't necessary for the board to solicit input for every non-tenured staff member. Beyond that provided with the recommendation for rehiring by the superintendent. Because they're non-tenured, they're on a basic, they're on a year-to-year contract and that's, that's how that works. Tenured folks, that's a different story, right? If, if something, if, if there's a situation of, for rehiring of tenure, you need to. You need to definitely have information and, and as it relates to. Why superintendent is recommending that person for tenure? Because that's a major milestone in the career of, of an educator. So you want to, and that, that decision shouldn't be done lightly. The board should feel confident that when, that, based on that recommendation, you're awarding somebody tenure. That you, that you feel good about that. Number six. Boards should have a clear policy on attracting, hiring, developing and retaining staff. True or false?
True. True.
Like I said, one of your major responsibilities is policy. And every district should have a solid set of policies that outline their hiring practices. You know, everything within their personnel arena. So it's, it's a major responsibility. Number seven. Staff members who are not rehired can ask for a letter of reasons. True or false?
True.
Yep, the answer is true. They can ask for a letter of reasons. Who's responsible for providing that letter of reasons?
Superintendent.
The superintendent, exactly. Not the board, it's the superintendent that's required to provide that employee with the letter of reasons. Number eight, staff members who are not rehired may ask for a hearing before the board. True or false?
True.
That is true. And that haring has a official name. It's called a Donaldson hearing. And it's actually, and I'll point out, it's not actually a hearing in the true sense of a hearing. It's the employee's opportunity to tell the board why they should rehire them. It's not, it's not a hearing per se, like you would have a, you know, a swearing in, a question and answer. It's a Donaldson session that's required by law. Donaldson is the case law. That made that a responsibility of the board to, to give if, if a member requested. Question nine. After a hearing before, a Donaldson hearing before the board. The board may rehire the staff member even if the superintendent does not recommend the rehire. True or false? It's true. You know, a Donaldson hearing, a person can come and state their case, plead their case, tell you why they should be rehired. And then the board can say, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in here and, and giving us this information. You know, the board will deliberate and superintendent will let you know what our decision is. Then the board will deliberate in executive session. And the board can actually reverse that decision of the superintendent and tell the superintendent, we're gonna rehire this person. Now, we tell the boards, be very careful if you ever get in that situation. And you're going to make a decision to rehire someone that the superintendent has recommended that you not rehire. Because that sends a message. And if you do that too many times, that sends an even bigger message to the superintendent and the public. That maybe you don't have confidence in his ability to manage personnel. All right, so that's something you should take very seriously if you, as a board, if you ever find yourself in that situation. And think long and hard before you make that decision. And then the last, number one, question number 10. The most critical staffing decisions that a board makes deal with the selection and retention of the superintendent. True or false?
True.
True. Boards always hear me. Tell, tell, tell folks routinely, to our boards routinely, the most important thing that a board does. For the achievement of improving student achievement in a district is the hiring of a superintendent. So, so great, you guys took a quiz. Guess what? That, that, those 10 questions, I will be sending you later this evening. In addition to a handout of the presentation that, that I gave. This handout again with all the answers. Because this is all you need to know as it relates to your role in personnel. Are the answers to these 10 questions. Let me go back to the presentation. Let's see. All right. Phone keeps ringing, but all right, uh, can you see the, let's take a quiz chart? All right, great. All right, so. In summary, we talked about the four functions of a board. Understand what they are because they, they are your major bailiwick of what you do as a board, policy. policy planning, oversight appraisal, and two-way communication. We talked about that matrix, right? The what and the how. Make sure you understand that and respect those swim lanes. It's important to respect the swim lanes. You are the, you are the what? Superintendent and his team are the how. Personnel, we just went through that quiz. Know what you should know. That quiz, when you get the one, the quiz with the answers, put that in your board bag. That's everything in personnel that you, you need to know as, as far as your responsibilities. Chain of command. A lot of the things we talked about tonight in the scenarios revolves around chain of command. Use the chain of command effectively. As a board member, refer, refer your stakeholders, your constituents to the chain of command to get their concerns and problems resolved. Know the policy that helps them do that. For you as a board member, you have an issue or a concern, your chain of command is a one-stop shop to the superintendent. Observe the chain of command. And remember that, you know, you are a board. You know, it's a team sport. You guys aren't gonna get, the individuals aren't gonna get anything done as individuals. It's a team sport, you gotta work to the, you work as a team. And the bottom line is you're there for the children. The team should be working for the betterment of the education process for all of the children in your district. And one of the things we find when, you know, a board is having trouble and the dynamics start to fall apart, it usually stems from a lack of communication. So it's important that as a board, you communicate, 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 and then communicate more. It's important, you can't over-communicate. Understanding each other, respecting each other, and keeping the lines of communication open. Making sure you understand what your communication protocols are. If you don't have them, it's, it's a exercise that's worth doing to determine how you all expect each other to communicate with yourselves, with the community, with the staff, the superintendent, et cetera. Understanding those expectations and what you can and cannot do are important to keeping the board dynamics positive, professional, and moving forward to make the difference in the district. So that's, again, that's my story and I'm sticking to it. Open it up for questions. I'll stop sharing. Here we go. Any board members with any questions or comments?
No questions, but I thank you, Jesse, for taking the time to, to walk us through all this.
No problem, and I appreciate the opportunity. And if there are no questions, I'll get out of your way because I know you got your regular meeting that needs to get started. But I do appreciate the opportunity. Hopefully, this information is helpful and hopefully it shapes, you know, your thinking as a board on how to be a better governing body for your Delanco community. So thanks a lot. Have a great night and see you next time.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right, good night, all.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, I'll move this along and we'll start with the approval of minutes of the February 10th, 2021, regular session, session meeting, Exhibit B. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second Cam Jenkins.
Questions and comments? Comments? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, if I could get a motion, please, to accept the reports of Secretary and Treasurer for January 2021, which are in agreement. Thank you.
I'll second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, thank you. Community liaison reports, please, if anybody from Riverside would like to speak at this time? I don't think that, that representative is here. Is there anyone?
So, Mrs. Cameron, I, I reached out to Riverside and they said that Gracie Iwaniki was not going to be able to participate in the meetings, but that they would be filtering information through Cameron Jenkins as the liaison, but his report comes later, so.
Perfect, sounds great. Is there anyone from the Delanco PTO that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Is there anyone from DISA Recreation or the Township Committee that would like to speak?
Hi, Mrs. Cameron, again, it's Matt Bartlett from DISA. We are currently having our registration. It's ongoing for our spring season of baseball, softball, and T-ball. Registration ends on March 15th. And we're actually doing a registration event at the Firehouse here in Delanco tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. If anybody would like to come in person and sign up, welcome to come down and do that. But we look forward to a great season.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We appreciate that information. Okay, so now I'm gonna put in our Speak My President's message. Hello and good, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for virtually attending this evening's school board meeting. I can't believe we are now into the month of March and trending close to our one-year anniversary of this new normal. On a positive note, we are, with, excuse me, on a positive note, with the emergence of spring, it also brings about the symbolism of change. We, as a school board, are hopeful to see these changes in our world, our community, and in our school. The positive changes are what make each day worth it. But what makes tonight worth it are our students of the month. So without further delay, I will now pass this virtual microphone once again to our superintendent so that he can present our students with some well-deserved praise. Mr. Mercer?
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron Nugent. So we, we always say this is the best part of the evening because we get a chance to recognize our students for doing a great job. Before we talk about the students, though, I just, I also want to reiterate what I've stated over the months that I truly appreciate the work of every staff member, of every parent, and of every student, and everyone that's involved in the education of the children, especially now. Over the past year, i- it's been the most challenging year that we've ever seen in education and the teamwork that we've seen and all of the, just the efforts of everyone out there is just amazing. I appreciate it. So we're recognizing the children, but I also wanted to recognize the adults. I, I mentioned to one of our staff members the other day that we can't make it happen without you. You know, I could put a plan together that's amazing on paper, but without the staff, it doesn't happen. So I appreciate the staff for making it happen. Likewise for the parents, you know, we could put a plan in place and we need the parents on board with that plan to, to make it happen at home for the kids that are doing things virtually. So I, I appreciate the adults as well right now before we talk about the students. So thank you for that. So without further ado, when it comes to students, we have a list here that was provided by the school principals. And what typically happens each month is the principals are gathering up names from staff members that are nominating students for these honors. So this is not random, this is not a lottery. This is happening based on staff members seeing the students do fantastic things during our hybrid and our virtual education that's happening. So what I'd like to start with is Walnut, and these are recommendations that Mrs. Noble received from teachers. And so here we go. So for Walnut, the very first student we want to recognize, give praise and encouragement to is our Walnut Whiz kid, a student that's basically just well-rounded and doing an amazing job, and that is Haley Stillwagon. Congratulations, Haley. We also have students that are being recognized for perfect participation. And every time I see this, I just wonder, you know, I've, I've been in a lot of Zoom meetings. I, I don't think that I've had perfect participation. So these students are doing an amazing job with that. So that, that's Kalen Walter and Hunter Bilowski. So congratulations to those two students. Perfect participation. Next, the dedicated student. So these are students that are working hard and just staying focused on, on schoolwork and also just being dedicated to everything related to being a, a very effective and successful student. So those students are Alyssa Stillwagon and Cheyenne Sight. So congratulations to Alyssa and Cheyenne. Next, we have most conscientious. So these are students that are definitely meticulous when it comes to the details, the schoolwork, everything that needs to happen when it comes to homework and everything else that's, that's happening instructionally. So the most conscientious for this month for Walnut are Victoria Iwaniki and Kayla Arnold. Congratulations to those two students. Next, we've selected a scientist at Walnut, a student doing an amazing job in science. That is Gianna Teet. Congratulations to Gianna. Next, we have a wonderful writer that was selected. And so of course, that student's doing very well in ELA, English Language Arts, especially in writing. And that is Lillian Brisky. Congratulations, Lillian. Next, we have the artist of the month, and of course, that relates to art class. That's Arabelle Headaway. Well done, Arabelle. And the athlete of the month. So this is someone that's selected based on, not necessarily the athletic program, because as you know, we're not, we're not running an athletic program right now, but based on athletic ability that they're showing in physical education class and maybe out there in the community. That is Luis Rosa. So congratulations to Luis. And finally, last but not least, we have a wonderful musician that was selected for Walnut. And that musician is Ryan Flanagan. So congratulations to all of those Walnut students for being nominated and selected for these honors. Next, we're gonna move on to Pearson. And so again, these students were selected by their teachers and then the teachers gave the names to Mr. Conti, which he, he then gave the names to me. So we're all very proud of these students for doing a great job during the month of February. And those students are, in Mrs. Arangio's class, we have Leonardo de Souza. Congratulations to Leonardo. Next, in Mrs. Crozier's class, we have Ethan Merrill. Congratulations to Ethan. So those are our two wonderful kindergarteners. Moving on to first grade, we have Ms. Smith's class, and that is Kai Sharma. Congratulations, Kai. Moving on to Mrs. Weller, we have Milana Abel. I saw Milana on here just a few minutes ago, but I'm, I'm actually looking at a different screen while I'm reading this. We also now have our second graders from Ms. Lupinski's class. We have Jack Raider. Congratulations to Jack. In Mrs. McCann's class, the student being recognized is Bryn Greenage. Congratulations to Bryn. Next, for third grade, Mrs. Barber's class, Hunter Campbell. Congratulations to Hunter. Third grade, Mrs. Fitzwater's class, that is Gavin Bartlett. And I, I think we have a proud dad that was on here at least just a few minutes ago. Next, for fourth grade, Mr. Stockton, that's Ariana Heggy. Congratulations to Ariana. Our next student for Ms. Wallace is Ariana Alexander. So apparently we have two wonderful students named Ariana in fourth grade. Awesome. Next, we have fifth grade, Mrs. Brendel's class, that's currently being covered by Ms. Letton. The student selected for that class is Gavin Mulligan. Congratulations to Gavin. And last but not least, for Mrs. Guckins' fifth grade class, we have Haley Claus. So congratulations to Haley. Congratulations once again to all these Pearson students for doing a fantastic job during the month of February. And it's my guess that they're doing it all the time, not just in February, but that's when they were nominated and selected. So, Mrs. Karen Minugian, that's what I have for student recognition. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And parents, if you wanted to stay, we're gonna have a brief conversation with a member of our technology group to discuss the issues that we've been experiencing in the past. So if you would like to stay, you're more than welcome. If you'd like to log off, I, we totally understand. I believe that Mr. Arrais is present, if he would like to speak at this time, that would be great. I'm sorry if I didn't say your last name correct. I know I saw him.
Yes, I am here, yeah. Yeah, no problem. It is, it is Jeff Airy, but, you know, a lot of people mix it up. That's not a problem at all. Thank you for giving me, giving me the time to speak here. Appreciate that. Just kinda start off with a summary, I guess. Moorestown took over the shared services for Delanco about three years ago now, I believe it was. You know, in that time, we've had, we've had a few challenges that we had to overcome. Especially when we started first providing the services. We inherited a few problems from the prior service provider. But over time, we've been able to incrementally improve the infrastructure while also being as fiscally conservative as possible. Some of these improvements are more visible than others and some are rather behind the scenes. But they've all kinda moved Delanco in the right direction. Delanco has experienced a few issues that occurred for some circumstances beyond the district's direct control. And we really worked as quickly as possible to try to correct those problems and return to normal service. The most recent one was just a couple of days ago. It was an, an interesting problem in that the delanco.com domain name, your, your name on the internet, has to be renewed periodically. And the provider is Network Solutions. And we actually did renew it in February and got a confirmation and everything, looked great. So we didn't think anything of it. And then a couple of days ago, Network Solutions turned off the domain. And we were very puzzled as to why. We contacted them and they said, oh, yeah, you did pay it, but we, we messed up. We turned you off, so we'll put you back in. They did that, and then the next day, another person from Network Solutions said, hey, you haven't paid us yet, so we're gonna turn you off. So we finally straightened it out with them. They're talking to each other now. And the domain is, is functional once again. The trouble with them turning off the domain, though, is that it usually takes about 24 hours for changes like that to take effect across the internet. So it's possible that when they turned it back on, certain people could get to the website and others couldn't. And it took a little while for it to all synchronize. That's the most recent example. We've had some other issues with, there was a what's called a denial of service attack was earlier this school year, started in late November. And that was a tough one to, to take care of because it's something that we really can't directly fix ourselves. We have to work with the internet service provider. Xcel is, is the provider for Delanco. Took them a couple iterations to get it fixed, but they eventually did. We really haven't had any problems since early January, I believe it was, when they had it fixed there. And before that, we've had some trouble. There was a, there was a fiber cut once. Squirrels having fun with the lines, chewed right through it. Got that corrected pretty quickly. And then there've been a few server issues over the, over the past couple of years. And again, that comes back to making sure that we were, we're on a good schedule for replacing hardware, for upgrading hardware, for doing all the security updates that need to happen, those, those pieces of equipment. And again, while being fiscally conservative as much as possible, so. It hasn't been perfect, but, you know, I, I hope that we've done a pretty good job. I think we've done a pretty good job supporting Delanco. Really appreciate the, the opportunity. It's been great working with, you know, Superintendent Joe Vicki. Albert is, is the man on the ground there at Delanco. He does a great job. And my team is backing up everything that they do as much as we can. And, yeah, it's a pretty good, good summary of how things are going. Do you have any questions for me that I could answer?
I personally do not, but I do appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to kinda inform the public because I know that it's impacted a lot of different people in our community. And we felt that it would be great to, to give them a, a little glimpse into why these issues are happening so that we can, so that they understand that we are attempting to address them as quickly as possible when we can impact them as quickly as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I do have one quick question. I don't know this off the top of my head, but first of all, Jeff, thanks for the report and it sounds like you're doing a great job. The, the complexity of these systems is immense and they're really fragile, which I know from personal experience. Is it possible, okay, so here's the question, is it possible to switch to another domain registrar?
Right.
Or, yeah, how you have, that, that may be, it seems like this kind of mistake, it might be worth considering next time we have to re-up the domain.
Agreed, yes. And, and they certainly dropped the ball on this one, which is surprising because Network, Network Solutions, our provider, is, is pretty well-known. They've been around the block for many years. I've, I've used them before. I haven't recently. The one that I've been using recently is. GoDaddy, which is a kind of silly name for registrar, if you ask me.
That's what I always use.
Yeah, but they, they do pretty well. I think they might be a slightly bit cheaper than. Network Solutions last I checked. I mean, it's, you know, registering a domain name is maybe a hundred bucks a year, and this might be a difference of. Few dozen bucks, but something I think we can definitely look into as an option. Who's to say that it might be a problem with.
Hundred bucks a year is not a good deal.
Yeah, no, it really isn't. But we got some. We do have some extra services in there, like the private registration, I believe. I don't know the exact amount, but you know, it's, it's, it's. It's not too bad. I think that was actually for two-year renewal. Yeah, he's saying, yes, it was two years for about a hundred plus some services. But we'll look into that, see some other.
It was for two years.
Yeah, thanks.
Jeff, Vince Calligwar, quick question. Have we talked to Network Solutions about getting some compensation for the mistake that was on their part? Or it might be for really for missing Mr. Mersinger, but just wondering if we had any.
We, I believe we received a discount on the service, which is. Since it only costs about a hundred dollars per two years, the discount is. So ju- just to follow up on what area is saying, and Jeff, I appreciate what you've shared. These issues frustrate everyone, from students to parents to staff, to, to everyone. Teachers, administrators, you name it, board members. Very frustrating, but all the emotions about it don't necessarily fix it. And, and that's, that's what I, that's what I was telling myself over the past three days. I mean, I was very frustrated. About the internet going down because of the firewall and the, you know, the website going down, the email going down. And it's like, these are things that we rely on. And going on with it. And the tech team, I think, did a really nice job. Of fixing it in, in the amount of time that they did, knowing that this was not something the district even caused. This was something that a provider caused. It was, it is a bit, it's something that definitely frustrates me more, though, to know that, you know, it's a hundred dollar invoice that. You know, I'm sure a lot of us out there are paying more for so many other things in life than a hundred dollars for the entire website and email service for our district.
Hey, I just want to stop you. That's not, that's not for all the web service and email. That, that's for just the domain registration. Delanco.com. And actually, a hundred dollars for two years, I would say is not a very good deal. Probably about twenty-five dollars for two years is more like what I would.
Well, regardless of that, Stephen, I think that it's negligible, to be quite honest, and for them to pull the plug on us for claiming that we didn't pay one hundred dollars. Is absolutely ridiculous to me. So do you know what I mean, like a hundred dollars?
There was clearly a mistake.
Yeah, you know, it's, it, they, they could have said, well, you know, you, you didn't pay, even though we did. And given some warning, instead they pulled the plug suddenly and then caused all of these issues. So I just want everyone here to know that. I share in that frustration, and I share in the fact that. You know, a lot of times people are looking for somebody to blame and saying, well, whose fault is this? Who didn't do their job and so on and so forth? And, and the Moorestown tech team, including Albert Panero. Did everything they could, but you, you can't see this punch coming when a company just suddenly pulls the plug like, like that. You know, so I, I just think that. You know, it's not even about the hundred dollars. It's about the fact that if we're paying for a service, we absolutely paid for it. They should have had a record of it, and they should have never pulled the plug on us.
At least for volume.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I think you're, you know, the, the frustration with Network Solutions is totally legitimate. It sounds like they made a big mistake. Just that, this is my philosophical position on this is that. I'm always expect, as somebody who's spent a lot of time with technology. I'm, I'm always expecting everything to be broken all the time. So the fact that it runs. You know, the rest of the year is pretty incredible to me. So I think it's a credit to the staff and. It's, yeah, this is tough, but hopefully it's behind us.
I agree with you. The fact that any technology works at all is miraculous sometimes. That's not a statement on Albert or Jeff or anybody, but it's the fact that, I mean, we're living in the 21st century. Where, you know, even just as, as early as my childhood or the childhood of some other people here, that there was nothing like this around. You know, so it's, it's really indistinguishable from magic or miracles at times. And, and for them to make it happen the way they do, I appreciate it. But. When, when something goes wrong, you know, we need our team to respond, and they did. And I, I appreciate that.
And we always try to be as proactive as possible, but sometimes we just have to react to things as quickly as we can and get them fixed and. And we know it's, it's a burden for everybody and it's, it's stressful. And, you know, try to do it as best we can.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And again, we appreciate you joining us this evening to, to spread the word as, and to provide some information. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're so welcome. I hope the next time we can all be in person.
Yeah, that would be great. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, I will now open this up for public comment on agenda items only.
Hi, this is Wendy Flanagan from PTO. I'm sorry I missed the liaison report. We would like to thank everyone who ordered Spiritware. The Spiritware had been opened up for one extra week until March 7. Once it closed. They will require a couple of weeks to print everything and get it out to everybody. But I just wanted to give that update to everyone that Spiritware is being printed as we speak, and we'll get to you soon. Also, our next PTO meeting is March 16th at 7:00 PM. An email with a link will be coming home by the end of the week. That's it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment on an agenda item? Okay, I don't see any hands up, so I will close it at this time, and we will now move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Mersinger.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Karen Minugian. I appreciate that. And when it comes to the superintendent's report, a motion is requested for the following items. Letters A through E, which are on the agenda. I have no additional commentary at this time, so a motion is requested.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Jenkins and Bob Duffey. Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it. Instruction and Program Committee. This is my committee, so I will just let you know that the CSTPOE update, reclassifications and placements, confidential per exhibit I. That's all I have. And now we will move on to the Finance Committee report, Mr. Litwack. Where's Harry? I see him. On mute in case you're speaking. There we go, I think.
There he is.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
On my screen, it says mute.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, so it's been confusing. And let me get to the agenda. Here we go. Okay, waiting for the agenda to open. I had it up and here we go.
No problem.
Yeah, well, as the resident board Luddite, I'm glad that the technology is. Okay, motion for necessary line item. I'm asking for a motion to approve the following. A, necessary line item transfer from January 2021, Exhibit J. B, monthly line item, monthly line account certification for January 2021. C, payment of bills in the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. As per attached bill list, Exhibit K. D, accept anonymous donation in the amount of a hundred dollars to support the music program. E, special education tuition contract with Burlington County Special Services Full District. Commencing 2/22/21 through 6/21/21 for the one student with Ted. At an annual rate of forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars pro-rated. Special education tuition. Academy commencing 9/23/21. Through 6/30/21 for one student to attend at an annual rate of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and five dollars, fifty-eight cents pro-rated. G, transportation with Cinnamons and Board of Education. To provide transportation for two students at an estimated amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Pro-rated. H, transportation with the Arc Transit LLC. To provide transportation for one student at a daily rate of a hundred and eight dollars per day. I, NutraService monthly report for January 2021, Exhibit L. J, gratification of bills paid in the amount of. Eighty-eight dollars, fifty-four cents with check number. Six, two-one, seven for January. Twenty-one, Exhibit M. So I've made that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Vince, I second.
Thank you, Vince. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Operations and Facilities Committee report, Mr. Calligwar.
Thank you, Marissa. We had our meeting, facility meeting. We haven't had one in a long time since I've been with the Facilities Committee, and it was good to have one. Mr. Dovey and Mr. Glockland were joining me in the meeting, and what we were able to find out is how hard Tim and his crew are working at the school really are. And with the limited funds they have available, they're doing some, some great work. You could tell from the way they were speaking about everybody, they have. Real concern for the kids there. I want all parents to know that, you know, you can feel safe knowing that. The folks we have taking care of facilities are doing a great job, and they really believe in it. That being said, let me read the committee report for you. For the month of February, routine maintenance activities, schools were in hybrid settings due to coronavirus. Obviously, we had snow rule because we had snow. Completion of work orders is needed. Special project activities, three carts are put together. And they were hung with Promethean boards on each cart for three crafts and classrooms at Walnut. It took down old smart boards, the three classroom at Walnut, took down three old smart boards at Pearson. Hung three new Promethean at Pearson. Fixed broken heat coil room 17 at Pearson. They rehung the smart board in classroom four at Pearson that was removed from classroom nine at Pearson to install a Promethean board. And they had the HVAC computer system upgraded at Pearson. That's a good thing. And that's all I have to report. Is there any questions? Let me know. Thank you.
Well, that was awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
Okay, policy.
This is Mrs. Karen Minugian. Before.
I'm sorry.
So I want to take a moment to also thank Tim Allen and the members of his team for what they do for the facility. As Mr. Calligwar is saying, Tim provided a, a lot of thorough information during the meeting. But one thing that Tim always says, and you know, he believes it in his heart absolutely, that. He treats this situation here as, as though this is like his home and his child is in it. Says, you know, i- if, if my child were here, I would want it to be cleaned this way. I would want it to be sanitized. I would want. Things functioning properly. So he looks at it that way, and, and I mean, he emphasizes that all the time, that the children here. He wants them to be treated the same way he would treat his own child in that scenario. So I appreciate Tim for, for his. Philosophy and mindset as well as, as the actions of, of him and his team.
Yes, he definitely exhibited a great pride for, you know, in regards to what he does with his team. So it was, it was great to hear and, and great, great to witness as well. Okay, Policy Committee report, Ms. Dormo.
Need to read through each policy or just say Exhibit L?
You could, you could just say that the. You could just name the exhibit or something. Yeah, you, you wouldn't have to read all the policies.
Okay, as the Policy Committee Chairperson, I make a motion to enter on first reading. The policies and regulations, which are included in the board packet found in Strauss Sma Alert 221, which is Exhibit O.
Okay, and may I have a second, please?
Second, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Questions or comments?
Is there anything, this is Harry. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, Vera, is there anything in these that we should be aware of that's, you know, either problematic or there was? Any questioning?
Um, just as Mr. Mersinger sent in our email, there was one policy about electronic transfer of funds. Victoria's just going to look into a little bit more before we vote on that, so we're just waiting on that one policy.
So that's not in here?
Yeah, that's, we're not voting on that today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
I, I just have one quick question. I see in here there's. School district security and there's a P7440 and an R7. Seven, four, four, oh, they're just two distinct security.
Policy and regulation, I believe.
Okay, okay, I see.
That's correct. Policy and regulation.
Yeah, that makes sense. I can see it now with the others. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Personnel Committee report, Mr. C Jenkins.
Thank you, Marissa. I will make a motion to approve the following letters A through E with no special notes on any of them. I will make the motion.
May I have a second, please?
All second.
Thank you, Phil. Questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Calligwar. You're on mute.
I vote yes.
Ms. Dormo. Mr. Dovey.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Karen Minugian.
Yes.
Mr. Litwack.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Sitchkeely.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Board Liaison Reports, Riverside School District, Mr. C Jenkins.
All right, at last month, I believe it was February 11th Riverside School Meeting, we discussed. Details of Riverside budget and their public budget meeting will be at the end of April. We talked about different possibilities for how to make sports night happen. Obviously, we want to make that happen for the kids. More different options with senior trip because I know, I believe Riverside right now, it's either go on senior trip and don't be present at graduation. Or go to graduation and be present, but don't go to senior trip. I believe it's something like that. They are talking different options for bringing kids back into the school, like having the seniors there for four days a week, and then the. The next week have juniors there for four days a week, different options like that. A senior that was from Delanco, Amanda Sweet, she did get Student of the Month last month, so congrats to her. We talked more support for virtual learning. I'm pretty sure at most schools are on the same page with that. And obviously, we're still in the process of doing, hiring a new superintendent at Riverside, so. We set our schedule. I believe we posted advertisements for that. I'm sure Joe's probably seen it on the proper forums, and. That's about all I have to report, Madam President.
Thank you, Cameron. I appreciate that. NJ SBA and BCSBA, Mr. Litwack.
Thank you.
Your book.
There was a county meeting on the. Twenty-second of February and a couple, they, most of it was about the athletics in New Jersey, the NJ SIAA. Primarily high school related. Some of the issues are, that came up was for board resolutions, that the possibility of staff time to get shots, time off for the school day. And they may need to take a sick day after the second shot of his reactions. They, they talked about the CDC certification for HVAC. Air vents, univens, filtration systems. You cannot force teachers to get vaccinated. That's an important point. And then there was another meeting. Just the eighth yesterday, and it was just wonderful.
yesterday and it was just wonderful. It was, um, about the uncertainty of emotion and the woman who presented it, Amy Hassa, is a and, you know, a certified MSW. She's also a board member. So she really understands what's going on and it was really about uh, recognizing your own triggers through reflection, planning for stress, conflict resolution and emotional triggers, coming to terms what, what we can control. And it's, this was really focused on adults, teachers, staff, board member, who, you know, the fact that control, we all want to control as much as we can in our lives. And one of the things is to understand your locus of control, what really is in your control and focus and what you can't control to separate them. People are hurting now. It's, uh, for the obvious. Um, and they talked about, and this is an interesting concept, embedded wellness to plan with purpose creatively, a willingness to make a positive routine, have breakthrough strategies. They also just mentioned, and I've been, I've been doing yoga and breathing exercises for forty-five years about breathing and it's a simple thing to teach people for, for six breathing or there's other patterns, but a basic. And within three breaths, you literally, um, stay, but you have to learn it to begin with. They use it a lot now. I know with um, the special programs that they have in the county where kids with emotional problems, um, the program right over near the, the college, near Rowan College. And they, they, they do a lot more with yoga, stress reduction, breathing than with corporal punishment, capital punishment, punishment period, uh, social connectedness. Social distancing. They said they call it social, that, that, that we call it social distancing. We should be calling it physical distancing because that's what the problem is. We're socially distancing ourselves. Even saying that, it's, well, we just got to keep our physical distance. We can interact. So it was very, uh, very much, they talked about role models, mutual vulnerability. That's what if you can respect in other people the same vulnerability that you feel, that goes a long way in human interaction. And we all need help sometimes. Sometimes I need help, sometimes you need help. And all this, you can, you, if you go on the School Board Association, uh, your website, it's under, you, you can pull this up yourself. They have it under for social anxiety training, uh, also suicide prevention and it's under, they call it mental health and and, uh, training, mental health, something training. So you, the board members can go to that. We have and I believe Marissa is going to be attending on the twenty-fifth, uh, Burlington County President's Meeting with all the county, uh, school district presidents. And if the president can't make it, the vice president, I was calling another, uh, the, um, county officers were calling. There were a few districts that hadn't put in their census report. We were up to date. Thank you, Vicky. And, um, so we're getting that all together because there were some, they have new presidents or Mount Holly, they had a board member would resign and they, they hadn't yet had the board meeting to confirm the new person. So the person couldn't put it on. The things that go on in administration, but the things that I would also like to point out, uh, to all our board members is the regionalization article of page twelve and thirteen of the Leadership Magazine. And basically it was Steve Sweeney, who's the state senator and um, about the leap grants, about the regionalization. And this was what basically about three years ago was started upon and there was this path to progress. And it's all coming back to fruition now. So it's, um, and everything is moving at kind of warp speed. They actually just passed something on Tuesday, apparently in the state of New Jersey to expedite all this, uh, with money and they put money behind it to, uh, do the feasibility study that I've been talking. And on a nice note is that the Dr. Nagy, who is the superintendent at BCIT and Special Services for the county is all for, um, regionalizing, having satellite, um, you know, to expand the counties. And so it looks like a lot of the changes that were attempted to be done are now back on, online to be done. And it looks like there's funding um, from federal monies now and, um, we're, we're getting back on track. So I'm, I'm happy to report that. And then next Friday, I have a Friday night, a, uh, director's meeting where that'll be it virtually attending. And then May twenty is the, um, where we have statewide, it's basically the meeting, the, the, the legal meeting of the board, the statewide board members. There's a term for it. This is slipping my mind. Thank you, folks. That, uh, there's, it's like, uh, the rest of the winter, the, the snow and the ice is kind of melted. Now we're back to hopefully being able to tackle some of these issues and problems.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Harry. I appreciate it. Township Committee. Mrs. Tersich Keely.
Okay, um, so there were two meetings since we last met. They met on February twenty-second and March first. Um, and I just condensed my notes into one summary because I know a lot of people are in attendance at the three-one meeting. Um, they discussed in, the township has received three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars from pilots this year, which is a hundred thousand dollars more than last year. And they do expect to get an additional fifty thousand dollars yearly for a certain number of years after a recent, recent settlement with Living Springs over some underpayments, um, that they were receiving. Um, in reply to the request from the school to help with some of the financial burden caused by recent developments in town, Kate Fitzpatrick suggested using a portion of that pilot money, um, for the schools, since we don't receive, currently receive any portion of that three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um, something that Edgewater Park actually has recently implemented. So that's where the idea came from. John Brown said he didn't see the value in this and, um, they would need to be worrying about the town and not the schools with that money. Vernella agreed with, um, Kate Fitzpatrick and also suggested using the quote-unquote found monies from Living Springs toward a potential long-term loan for the schools. Mike Templeton, um, didn't see the value in assisting the schools at this time. And later in the meeting, um, Christine Holland also agreed with Templeton and Brown. Um, the township is looking at raising taxes this year, but no specific percentage has been agreed upon yet. And, um, the township is debating allowing any businesses related to cannabis legalization in Delanco. They have, I think it's a hundred and eighty days, some, some specific deadline uh, by which they have to decide what sort of uses would be allowed or not allowed. Um, you know, the result of allowing cannabis in Delanco could potentially mean more revenue for the town, which the school would potentially share in. Um, so it's definitely something that we should, uh, keep our eye on. Um, but based on comments from the committee members at the meetings, they're leaning away from gaining, um, any revenue from the cannabis legalization. Um, there will however, be a public hearing, uh, for comments, um, on four nineteen, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Very informative. Thank you.
I, I would like to comment on that.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I was neither at the original meeting, uh, nor did I watch the, uh, watch it. So I was trying to keep as objective as I could and I actually approached, uh, I've talked to a couple of the town, uh, about three members, but I thought it kind of surprising. Uh, Mr. Brown saying that the schools, it's like saying that the schools aren't part of the town and the kids and the people who have kids aren't part of the town that he represents. I don't, I don't understand that, that thinking. And, you know, we're, I think Vince, you, can you hear me, Vince?
Yes, Harry.
Yeah, I think you were the one that pointed out that we were in the county, what, thirty-eighth out of forty-nine?
I'm looking at it now and I did send a, a, a letter, an email to all the people on council because I'm, I'm, I know like a lot of parents here in town, I'm very concerned about what's going on with the school. My three years here, you know, and with some of the new board members, with C Kathy, we discovered, you know, how much of the county percent, you know, you look at the county and what each town um, gives up as a percentage of their budget to their school system. Um, when I looked at Burlington County, we are, we put in fifty-two point eight percent. The county average is sixty-three point zero percent. Out of the forty-one towns, out of the forty-one towns of Burlington County, we are thirty-seventh in terms of, of the percentage of funding that we give the school.
And it's about fifteen percent less. I'm just dropping it out in my head, about fifteen percent less than the average.
And, and, and thank you for bringing those, Perry, because I think parents need to know this where, you know, it shows, this doesn't just happen. That's not just an accident. That's a concerned effort, you know, and, and, and I'm, I'm going to speak to everyone here about it because I'm concerned and I, and I do make, raise this up whenever I can because it is important. Educating the youth here is important. When I see people complain about our youth here and they say that, um, you know, what's going on, what's happening? Well, you, you get what you put into it. And if we're not, we're not even average, we're not even average in terms of funding and what we're trying, trying to accomplish here. And, you know, it's, it's a credit to, to, to Mr. Muris here and the staff of what they're doing. When you look at that, again, thirty-seven out of forty-one in the county, we're not even near the average percentage that most towns are putting into the county. But I appreciate saying my piece. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that was, you know, this has happened over time. This isn't something an overnight situation. And it, it really is, um, you know, I got in the mail today, five dollar Meadows ice cream coupon. You know, it says, I can spend that as much as I can, the potential sharing. We have the, it's never been there, the potential sharing, you know, uh, go to the bank and tell them you want to put in potential earnings. You know, it's not a reality. It's a reality that needs to be addressed differently. And it's not the, the board versus the township. We're all the same taxpayers and I've been pointing it out for a number of years. And, um, I think maybe some people recognize and some people prefer not to, but it seems, uh, to me, that's ingenuous if we're talking about giving thirty-year, you know, uh, pilot programs and, uh, you know, thirty-year contracts and whatever with the library with the school. And at the same time, never giving the schools. That's part of the town's budget is schools and in every other town in New Jersey. So it's really something that needs to be looked at. And the other thing is with the pilot, if there are going to, you know, uh, futuristically, what was, the idea of you need a dedicated tax, not a potential tax. And that's what needs to be happening is that, you know, to get more money from the township to the schools by a dedicated, that fifty percent of the pilot for the next two years goes to school. And then after that, you reevaluate it or you say, okay, now we only need this much. But, um, without, you know, the whole in our budget is directly linked to what actions the township took. Nothing the school board did. Those were actions by the township that, you know, it's like if you have a business partner and they, you know, go off and spend without you knowing it and then you're on the hook.
Harry, I want to point something out. This is Bob.
Yeah.
The school board decides what they're going, what they want the taxpayers of Delanco to pay towards the school budget. The Township Committee is only responsible for their portion of responsibilities. The school board's responsible for theirs. Harry, let me finish.
No, no, I don't understand what you're saying when you said for their responsibility in this school board or theirs. What is, what is the responsibility?
It's just like we have statutory responsibilities, they also have statutory responsibilities.
That's correct, but they're different.
They are funding, they, they are funding their responsibilities. I keep hearing about this, how we're, we're, um, forty-seventh or whatever the heck it is in, in funding our, our school budget. Well, perhaps we, it's because the school board has not been able to raise the taxes that, that's necessary to, to make our, our district viable um, in, in certain areas, especially the special education. So, you know, I, to, to, you know, the, the pilot program, I think the township has maybe five or six pilots, some of them are very small. And, you know, those are not thirty years. They're twenty years or something less than that. Pardon me?
Those aren't, the big ones are the one, and that one specific one is the one affecting it.
How, how is that affecting the, the?
Because the taxes only go to the council. They don't go into the.
That's right. And they don't produce one school child, not one. So that, you know, is, as far as that's concerned, this is something the state created years ago to try and encourage, I guess, businesses to locate in towns. And I, I agree with, I think the township does have an obligation when they develop a program, a pilot program that a certain percentage, based on probably the existing, the way the taxes are divvied up now, that should go to the school district. So if, if the school district is, you know, uh, would, would get those portion of the funds now, I, you know, and, and also the fire district. So there, there are the three taxing agencies plus then you have the, um, the sewer authority, but.
I, I just want to bring this back. Can I just have a second to, to bring this back to earth? Oh, I'm sorry. This is Steve. Steve McLaughlin here. Um, I, I'm, I'm just like, just want to take a step back. The, the overall picture to me, I'm, I'm looking for a favorable outcome for the people in this town. So if the, the, the school district is under pressure, we need more money or else we're going to have to fire teachers. I mean, that's the situation. So, uh, if our, if the answer from the township committee is just, we have to raise taxes significantly on the town and that's the only way we can manage to cover our expenses, then I guess the outcome is the taxes are going up significantly. The situation for me, hold on one second. The situation for me, looking at, at the overall, uh, scene in the town is that township committee seems like they're doing pretty well. I mean, the schools are under pressure. We can't pay our bills. Township committee is talking about, you know, they, it seems like they have a surplus and seems like, I mean, I'm looking at the, the Field of Dreams, which costs almost fifty thousand dollars. It's a baseball field, uh, which is not used currently. It costs fifty thousand dollars a year to landscape. You know, that, that's a landscaping contract. That, that could be a big portion of a teacher's salary. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking, you know, I don't want to raise taxes on people in this town. So I'm just looking for an outcome.
Steve, let me point out, the Township Committee is responsible for recreation, police, uh, you know, municipal waste, those types of things. They're responsible for that. They develop their budget and they, they do that every year.
I understand that. My point is they, they have money left over. You don't have enough money. Something's off.
The school, why, why, you know, you're looking to them, if they have, if they have a surplus or something, a newfound money that they can give, fine, talk to them about it, but it's not their responsibility to fund the schools.
This is, yeah.
Not a.
My, my point is that responsibility of people in this town, raising taxes significantly should be an absolute last resort. We have to, we have to look, you know, leave no stone unturned. And we're in, this is what we're doing. We're in the process of having these conversations with the township.
And we should be talking to them and saying, hey, listen, we're, we're in a position and you guys are doing a good job with that. Letting them know that we have, we have, we have a unique situation, especially with the special ed uh, and the cost of, you know, for, uh, students that are, you have to go out of district. The, the cost of that's astronomical. But what I'm saying is, if you, if you go at them and say, hey, you guys are spending all this money, well, they the, the, uh, the taxpayers, the voters of Delanco wanted those things. Okay, now is that, you know, so they went about and they, they funded it through taxes, through what, you know, uh, grants and so forth. We are responsible for the education of children.
Okay, so, so either, either Delanco voters want higher taxes or they want worse schools. I mean, these are the two options.
Well, I got to tell you, I sat on Township Committee and I listened to people complain about, you know, all kinds of stuff. And the thing, you know, whether we, we did have, uh, adequate facilities for our children, uh, for our recreational programs or whether we have, you know, there are people that want to have a rec center. Um, and, you know, the, the cost of that would be astronomical.
And those should be lower on the priority list than funding our schools.
So, but, yeah, but there, you're two different boards. They have their. So, but yeah, but there were your two different boards, they have their priorities, we have ours, they're separate.
My my priority is to fight for the kids in this town, so.
Excuse me, Steve. Bob, who are you representing? You're supposed to be repping the school board and the school board's needs, not the township. That that is free information.
I understand that. I understand that. What I'm trying to tell you is, if you keep on attacking the township committee because they say they they don't have a responsibility, you're not going to get any help from them.
Bob, I, Bob, it's, I gotta say this though. We we're dealing with the situation with the special needs, a problem we didn't create. Now, the town did the right thing and and letting the housing happen, I understand all that, I'm not putting blame on anything. But we're, we're we're taking the repercussions of that. When I wrote that letter, I'm going to say this too. When you take into account that the kids go to Riverside, we have the the least funded school district in the county, in the county, man. That's that's ridiculous for a town like us to be.
And then raising taxes, then propose a budget that's going to raise the taxes. That's the only way you're going to, that's the only way.
We're limited to raising our taxes two percent every year, right?
Yes, that's our problem from the.
And that's not. Only allowed to do it two percent unless there's other adjusting items. We don't have other adjusting items except for bank cap this year, it's sixty five thousand dollars, that's it. So we can't go above two percent.
Technically, it can go above two percent, but you put it out to a vote to the community. And then what that, what happens with that is, I mean, we we know the history of it is that whether it's in Delanco or other communities, a lot of times that would get voted down, and then you have to go back to the drawing board with the budget. So anyway, I mean, it is possible, it's just a a very difficult process to get that voted on and approved.
I I my.
It'll be three percent. I think.
Well, that's what if we realize bank, bank can't can't.
But so everyone, I mean, what people in the township know is that with the outcome of this, if we don't, it may maybe the township committee will come through with a loan and we can get through this shortfall. But if the outcome is that we we have to fire a teacher or two teachers, that will be really shooting us in the foot, that'll be a disservice to everyone in this town. So if there's something that the township committee can do right now to help us, and I think they should do the right thing.
Well, I my suggestion would be that to form a committee, and we've already got the the, I guess, part of that done, to sit down and in a work session with them. Um, and it's going to take several meetings so that they clearly understand the situation we're in. And what Vicky said, you know, the limitations as to what we can raise, you know, raise the funds.
I think we've been through this with, I think they're they're pretty clear on the on the details.
I'm even going to say that that letter I wrote, I'm sorry, Steve, but we've had a meeting from the year before, and I I wrote that letter, Kate Fitzpatrick was the only one who who contacted me about, you know, concerns about it. I I I I I have to wonder about it. And and you know, folks who are watching, like, this goes back to who, you know, who we're putting in, who we're voting for, parents, you need to run. Because if you're not, other people are, and they're going to make the decisions for you and your kids.
Yeah, Kate Fitzpatrick was very supportive, Fern was supportive, um, for her, so it's not that we have no support on the on township committee, it's not like this is complete, so completely foreign to them, it's just we don't have three out of five voting members of the township committee.
And that's what you need. My my point is, knowing the personalities, I, you know, except for one person, I would suggest sitting down, talking privately, you know, I say privately, you know.
Oh, no, this is, I think, I think you're, you're maybe you're, you're coming to this conversation a little bit later, uh, but we've, I mean, this is, this is not, you know, we're now a month into this or more.
I'm not coming to it late, I'm I'm aware of, you know, the conversations that have been going on, and I've also heard the other side, and I'm thinking to myself, hey, this is not going to go anywhere if if he if if people keep, you know, I I don't, I don't want to say uh, rubbing people's noses in it, but blaming blaming people for the fact that we're in trouble now financially.
I mean, we're adults, I don't think, I don't think, I'm I'm not responsible for protecting the delicate feelings of members of the township committee, I mean, we're, we have a serious problem in front of us.
Hey, listen, uh.
You know, I just want to say something, Bob, I appreciate him providing a a perspective from his experience because I think that does have value and merit in regards to understanding both sides of the conversation. On the flip side, I do understand the impact that the decisions made have gravely affected our school di- district and our budget. And because of that, we now have to make some very, very tough decisions moving forward. So we did have those previous conversations in the early stages of the budget process. Um, initial feedback was what was mentioned. Um, so that leaves us to have to now roll up our sleeves, which Vicky and Joe have done, and to really get down to see what we have to do. And unfortunately, we are in quite a hole that we have to dig out of, and in order to do that, we have to make some, like I said, very tough decisions. So we weren't hoping for some support, even if it was momentarily, for like a a year or or so, but we we weren't even able to get to that point in time to have that discussion in regards to that, because the conversation was kind of, um, I guess, it was stopped, like, this is not something we're going to discuss. We don't feel it's necessary, three out of five did not feel strongly that this was the direction we need to go in. And like you said, that is their choice to make, it's not their job to fund the schools, we were just looking for support. And the reason why we were looking for the support is because, like I said, the decisions made and the actions had that have now impacted our ability to function properly and soundly and financially.
I I I understand, and the one issue I think you guys, everybody's referring to is the um, the new affordable housing complex has has hurt the uh, the Delanco schools as far as funding for those special needs students and so forth. Um, I I I can tell you that one of the members that are that's being supportive of this uh, helping schools out was also in favor of having that because they were afraid of a lawsuit, uh, affordable housing lawsuit. And that was one of the tough decisions. I personally, when I was on committee, I I did, I wasn't in favor of it, and I know, I know John Brown wasn't in favor of it. Um, I know uh, Mike wasn't in favor of it. So, you know, those, you know, unfortunately, the planning board, um, or the land use board decided that they had to do this or else the township would have faced a lawsuit over, you know, uh, not having the the appropriate number of affordable housing units.
The lawsuit would still be going on.
History now, no.
Listen, there's another round coming up, Harry, there's going to be another round. And that's why you want to.
We got to work together.
Well, that's why we feel strongly that, right, that it would be better moving forward if we were partners in these endeavors.
I I agree one hundred percent.
So that we can all be privy to the impact and hopefully benefit from some of the benefits of these decisions because obviously, everybody's affected.
Right.
And everybody is impacted. So hopefully, because if we can't make movements forward in this area and this decision that moving forward, when these opportunities present themselves, that we are both standing together as a partner, looking at this and looking at it high level, big picture, and saying, how can we make this work for everybody? And hoping that we get the call to say, hey, come to the table, just like we would do for anything else, to say, let's, let's look at this, this is going to impact the majority.
Uh, the amazing thing to me was when the land use board was meeting and and pushed and pushed that as a solution, they never, did they ever reach out to the school board? I I bet the answer is no.
No.
I I I know other other, um, you know, committees and so forth, that they weren't even consulted on it. So.
It was, it was.
They should have invited us to discuss about the pilots.
Is the land use board a, is that a, um, are people just appointed to that board?
That's correct, Harry.
And how many, you know how many people are on that?
Oh, I I believe it's seven, it could be nine.
Okay, and.
I'm I'm having a senior moment with that.
Oh, hey, you know, I've known you a long time, Bob, I, you know, back BCID when you were running a business. And I'm just am always trying to get what's best for the most, for the most, you know, be efficient with our money, and it was discouraging to to see that the way it's supposed to, when you learn how school boards work, because there's different, they're totally two different animals. The accounting systems are different, but they're linked together, the state, you know, links them together. But we've been under the two percent cap, just like the township. To do something, you know, because you're afraid of a lawsuit, you know, okay, that was a decision that was made by not me, not by, it was made by some people, the repercussions of it. And it's not, we're we're in the hole now, but that pilot is for thirty years. It's never going, well, the school will never for thirty years, won't get any money from there, that's not a, if if you had a partner in business that took advantage of you that way.
I wish I had some insight into that, what others' decisions were made, because that sounds, that's outrageous to me.
Well, did you go to any of the meetings to say, hey, township committee, how come you you're giving, you know, you're not going to give the school board any uh, or the schools part of this money? I, you know, I sat, I guess, at the uh, last, when the Deaton Watson uh, situation, uh, the the new folks that came in there, that basically got extended into that pilot program. I didn't see anybody, I I didn't see any of the members here in that in that township meeting when that was discussed. So to come back and and say, oh, you know, you know, you were a bad person because you voted for that, I think that that's counterproductive as far as trying to get.
I hope, I hope no one in this town thinks people think they're good or bad people because of the way they voted or the two.
So, so, you know.
Not the way that I know that most of us in the board approach it, it's just the issues.
Pilots weren't, the pilot wasn't something that somebody dreamed up to to uh, you you know, to to.
No, no, no.
The township bridge or get, you know, be able to, it it was, it's a creature of the state, they have created the rules for it. The township committee, when when I guess Dolan, who's building the new warehouses there, wanted to have a pilot and people uh, on committee were saying, no, we don't want a pilot. And I said, well, wait a second. And I was still on committee at the time, I said, why are, you know, why are you just saying no? I said, here's an opportunity to be able to give the schools a portion of that money. Now, Dolan, I think, is not getting a pilot, they're they're going to pay regular rates. So the school, the schools will get their percentage of that of that project, um, of those taxes that they pay. But as far as, you know, Living Springs is concerned, um, uh, you know, I think there's something with the.
Who's Living Springs?
That's down on the highway.
I think it's ninety nine units.
What is, what is the living spring?
There are the apartments that are seniors only.
Right.
Right on one thirty, uh, you know, where.
Isn't it by abundant life?
Yeah, it's easy to miss.
Yes, it is, okay.
So. And then, and we have a couple of homes on Burlington Avenue, um, uh, that I think are um, maybe affordable housing to have a pilot, I'm not sure about that. Um, but the, but the, it's the um, lumber place and the what used to be Deaton Watson are the are the ones that I'm familiar with. Um, and I I think we're almost halfway through the uh, the lumber um, place there.
Is that Boise you're talking about?
Not Boise, no, they not have, they do not have any pilots, no.
I think we're pretty far off the track, though. I mean, what is, this is all kind of like history that doesn't really have a direct relevance. The situation is, the school district is in very serious trouble. We asked the township committee for a life raft and may decline to give it to us, and so we're probably going to have to take cuts.
I I I think we can still talk to them, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion. I think if you, we sit down and talk.
I, we would love to have your help on this, I mean, if you can.
We we had these talks before, uh, uh, Phil, you remember this.
Lou, when I was on committee, I never talked with you, you never talked with me. So I, you know, I.
And and we will, I will address that, you and I could have a, you and I would talk personally, and Bob, I respect your opinion on on what you're saying, you do.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think, I think we can work on them, I just, I think it has to be.
There's no more time, this is, I mean, the way that these budgets work, I think that we're out of time, I mean, is it right?
No, not necessarily. We still have time, we have time with ours, and we I may have time.
Right, right. It's getting, well, time is right, yeah.
So they're not, they're they're not set in stone yet, and they may not be, you know, until May, June.
We beat this one down.
So Mr. Cameron, I know that the the horse has been beaten, but.
This one has been beat.
But I want to make one comment in fairness, in fairness to the township committee, uh, the discussions about the Ron property, which later became Cornerstone, happening for years. We we were not left in the dark about it, but we were, we were certainly not part of the decision making process, that was the township's process. They made the decision. So, you know, we we were told about it, but we were also told that it's a foregone conclusion. And so we met with them numerous times to ask about what the impact could be when it comes to the students that would would be enrolled and, you know, how much money they might be receiving and so on and so forth. I mean, we had meetings, we did receive information, but we were not part of the decision making process, and that's not really part of how it works anyway. But still, I, in fairness to the township committee, they didn't leave us in the dark, they shared information with us. But what we said was, we know this is going to have some kind of impact, we just don't know what yet. And then when the units were built and they started um, having families go into the units, that's when we started to actually see the impact, and it was far more than what we originally estimated. And that, and that, that is what happened. I mean, you, you, we couldn't prepare for, let let's say hypothetically, we said, okay, we're going to have a hundred thousand dollars in extra costs. And it was, let's say, between three and four hundred thousand dollars in extra costs, that's a big difference that we didn't necessarily estimate. And you you just don't know, we see that coming, and it, and we can't just say, well, it's cornerstone. There are other families that have come into the community where children have needs and the needs cost a significant amount of money. So it's not just cornerstone. But the point is that that when students have extensive needs, it does cost the district a significant amount. And we're, number one, I I want to make it clear that this isn't against students, this is not against their families, this is not against anyone. It's just, it's just math at this stage where we are spending a tremendous amount on certain out of district placements, for example, which we're exploring other options. Uh, we're looking at different things that we can do to help address that. But at the same time, I mean, the 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 shortfall that we have, that has kind of piled up over the past couple of years, that, I mean, it's just hard to keep up with. A district like Delanco cannot absorb that and say, well, you know, we're fine with our budget after receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional costs. So what I would like to say to Mike Templeton is, thank you for that communication over time, I don't want the township committee to be blamed. But at the same time, what I would ask is, would the township committee consider, again, helping us because this this could be the difference between programs and not having programs. This could be the difference between teachers having jobs or not, you know, so this is something that I am making this plea to the township committee that this is a situation that none of us truly created. But I think it's something that we need to work together to resolve. Um, and and I I I know for a fact that the district, if we do it alone, impact on programs, staffing, and other aspects of what we do. I I know this already. This is something that our district is already discussing over the the past few months. It's just a matter of what's it going to be, and that will be part of the discussion that the board has. But I would rather not have that discussion, I would rather say, well, we can save some things with the help of the township committee. That's that's what I'm asking, it's not a demand, it's not disrespect to what you represent, it's, we do need help, and that's.
We're a community, and and Joe, you're you're a thousand percent correct, so. The one thing I've seen, I mean, so far in the few, what, the three months, is I think physically and the town, the the um, schools are being run efficiently, as as efficiently as you can under the circumstances that we that exist today. And it's not, it's not like we we're going out and building a stadium or something like that for for the for the student. I, you know, I, it's, it, and that's, that's the argument, to sit down with those other committee, you know, with the township committee people and and show them, because I have no idea of what, you know, what, you know, the finances and how they're handled with school boards versus township committees and so forth. So I, you know, I I think, again, I think there's there's time, I think we, you know, we can, we can work on it. Um, you know, hopefully successfully so that so that we get out of this situation that we're in temporarily. So I think having Fern and Kate um, on our side, it it, you know, is a good start. So um, we just, we just have to peel off one or two other. So, um, we just, we just have to peel off one or two other people there. And I think. I think we can do that if, if we, if we, you know, sit down in a non-adversarial type of situation. That's, that's all I'm trying to say. So.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's, I appreciate everyone's comments. Obviously, it's a very touchy subject with a lot of passion behind it. So. Hopefully we find, um, some great resolutions to get to the other side of it all. So thankfully, I left a check mark, check mark on my paper where we were last, because otherwise I would have forgotten. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, um, I've, I've listened to this. Uh, I, I, I thank Mr. Dovey for, uh, for, uh. Taken, taken some arrows there and explaining a lot of things. It's, it's not us against them. It's not, uh. We're all looking for a better community and a better school system. Much as, as Mr. Dovey alluded to a couple of times and tried to get across. The affordable housing law in New Jersey, um. That's something we're kind of force-fed. And when you challenge it or object to it. You end up with probably two or three times more housing units. And then you end up paying your core costs and the other guy's core costs. So it gets real expensive really fast. But I'll put that aside. Um, as far as, um. You know, I've, I've been actually spending more time looking at your budget. And other school district budgets than I have on the municipal budget. Um, and I'm trying to educate, a- as Mr. Dovey said, uh, the terminology is different. How things are calculated are different, but I'm, I'm slowly getting a handle on it. But I've been looking at other K through eight districts, uh, in the region. And I think you'll find it very illuminating if you look at your financial report. And compare that to other districts, K through eights, and their financial reports. They're on the New Jersey Department of Education website by year. Uh, the interesting thing in those reports, those financial reports, which run about a hundred and thirty pages. Uh, in the back section there, they have, uh, uh, ten-year look backs. And so you can see how budgets. Uh, evolve, uh, over the last ten years in those districts and your district. And, uh, I think you'll learn a lot. The other thing, uh, again, as Mr. Dovey pointed out. Your budget, you set the budget that you need to provide a thorough and efficient education. The township sets a budget to provide the municipal services that this community wants. They're two separate things. That chart and the talk of percentages that were low on percentage, were ranked forty-third. That doesn't mean a thing. You have control of what you're, what you're spending and what you need. And that's your side of the seesaw. If you spend, um, you define that tax rate. You define what you need. And, uh, I think, um. You know, tossing out numbers like that, that were, it, it's just misleading and it's really disinformation.
Mike, I got a question. It's not disinformation. That's, that's a fact. That's everything.
I, I'd like not to be interrupted. Okay, thank you. Um, it's, it's really disinformation and it's unfair that listening to three board members. Uh, perpetuate that. It's, it's kind of unfortunate. Comment without being interrupted. Okay. Um, so I, I think, I think the lesson or something that the, the board members can, can, uh. If you want to, I think, look at, look at the other district budgets. Look at those other financial reports. And look at your own financial report. Buried in the back of it, it says. You know, it has a page, a couple of pages describing the tax abdems, the pilots. And there's a, in black and white, the pilots have absolutely no impact on your budget. Zero. And so that's in your financial statement. And, um, I, I think if you look at those reports. That you submit, your district submits, I think you'll find it very illuminating. And when you come, you know, come back to us. With that, those facts and that understanding of the relationship between a school district and the municipality. And the constraints that you're against and the constraints that we're against, then we can have a conversation. But if there's gonna be. Distortions and innuendo and half-truths going back and forth and originating amongst some of you.
Can you be specific, Mike?
It's not gonna look, if you listen to what you've been talking about for the last twenty minutes. What I have to say, uh, we have a township committee meeting next Monday night and we have a budget session on the twenty-second. So.
Small tag, just to, you know, because I can't help it. It's, to, to me, the situation is we, um. I mean, you're a member of the township committee. So what I, what I want to do is fund the schools properly without raising taxes. So what I'm asking the township committee to do is to find somewhere to cut your budget. I mean, there should be some kind of mechanism. You should at least be open to the possibility of having a conversation with us. And I, to me, it feels like you're just kicking the can down the road and, you know, throwing some. Making us feel like we don't, you know, telling us to do our homework and come back, but you're ignoring the, the, the thing that's playing in front of everybody's face. Which is that, we can, yes, we can raise taxes on the town, but that's not what we want to do. We want to fund the schools without raising taxes if at all possible. So that, that's my comment. Thank you.
That's correct. That's where this all started from. This is a tough time. We do not want to raise taxes on the people in this town. People are suffering enough. We were hoping to work with the township to figure out a way to keep taxes as they are. And it seemed to us that the township had some extra money to spend on some vanity projects for the town that could perhaps be better suited for the schools this year.
Priority should be the kids.
Thank you.
There's a lot, Ben.
Move this on. We're gonna move this to old business. And these should be relatively quick. So A, ethics forms must be signed to return to the business administrator. B, board member mandatory training for twenty-twenty-one. And C, the deadline for S E C filings is four thirty-twenty-one. Deadline for new board members is three twenty-eight-twenty-one. Please submit them as soon as possible. Is there any new business?
I have something I'd like to bring up. It's, um, related to how funds are spent. Um, and I just wanna, I want to give a little background.
It's helpful to identify yourself.
Oh, Vera Dharma. It's come to my attention that our district belongs to a consortium of Title III funds. And the North Hanover School District is the lead agency for the consortium. Title III funds come from the federal government and are used for EFL or for English language learners. In order to use these funds, it's my understanding that students must be screened and tested for ESL. Following specific regulations, state regulations. My question is, before COVID in twenty nineteen, were we in compliance for identifying and screening for ESL? And if we were not in compliance, how could we spend Title III funds? That's my question. This has to do with how we meticulously use any funds, even if this amount of money is not a big amount of money. I want to know, are we following proper procedures? Are we being meticulous? That's the root of my question.
Okay. So, question that definitely could have been asked via email and they could have researched and responded. Unfortunately, at this time, without that prior notice, they're not able to provide you that research information. So I think it's probably better addressed, um, after the meeting.
Okay, at, at another meeting, we could also bring it up.
I mean, is that, go ahead, Harry.
Well, I, 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 as the head of the committee, Vera doing the finances now, I would say that, yeah, we are. Uh, in compliance, we're doing what we're supposed to do. And I don't understand what any kind of remedy. From twenty nineteen has with our energies going forward.
The, the reason I bring up twenty nineteen is because with COVID, the state gave a lot of leeway. And to testing, state testing. But before COVID, there are specific regulations that, Harry. I don't think you're familiar with, that you have to have a teacher. She has to be here. She has to be qualified to give the screening test.
As a board member, it's not my business. It's not.
That's why I'm asking the, the superintendent, because that's his business and he would know. So, Harry, you can't really answer that question.
Here, I'm not answering it, but I am.
You said you thought we were in compliance.
Well, firstly, to respond to what Caminugian said, thank you, Mrs. Caminugian. I appreciate your response. Uh, Ms., Ms. Darmo, uh, I have shared a tremendous amount of information about ESL. With the board in recent months. I, I would recommend that you review the information that has already provided. In regard to, uh, issues and, you know, challenges that we faced in regard to ESL. But I, I provided a significant amount of information about that to you.
I'm talking about Title III funding. And if we were legally allowed to spend those funds, that was not provided in the email.
Okay, well, I appreciate your question. And I, again, I would, I would refer you back to those emails in regard to the compliance topic. That, that's, that's the only comment I have at this time.
Vera, just for your information, I, I have been a New Jersey certified principal supervisor. For about thirty-some years. I have a master's degree in school psychology. I'm also certified in Pennsylvania. And in New Mexico. And I have teaching certification in California, New Mexico, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, number, numerous subjects. And I also. Think I know a little bit, but I don't understand specifically what you're trying to accomplish. Are we, are you trying to get us more money?
Well, the, the question is, if you have federal funding. You have to follow federal, you have to follow regulations in order to use that funding. Um, this is not even a big amount of money I'm talking about. My whole point is we have to be very meticulous. With our money. And this is just one area where I'm not sure. We're being meticulous and following regulations. So I'm wondering, are there other areas where we're not being meticulous? That's why I'm bringing this up.
Well, I think that that, at this point in time, is something that should be tabled. Because as we learned earlier in our training, this is not something to be discussed in this manner. This is something we can discuss out at a different time. So I think move on. We will now move on from this subject. Because there's nothing we're going to gain from continuing to discuss this and throw information out on the table that no one is going to answer. So now I'm moving on. So we are now going to see if there's, um, information regarding the budget workshop, like.
Um, so Mrs. Cameron again, before we get into the budget workshop, we would, we would typically have like a break for the, um, the board members. Uh, prior to certain things happening. Is it possible for us to have that break for a few minutes?
Of course it is.
As the presiding officer.
You may have a break to, to do as, as you wish.
All right. I'm only saying that maybe, maybe for the sake of everyone, that we have a break for just a few minutes before we jump into the budget aspect.
Hey, you're being too meticulous now, man.
I took my break a little earlier.
I, I did see Bob quickly run off and come back, but yes.
I'm speaking for myself, but, but I'm also.
Yes, let's give everybody a couple of minutes to quickly go take care of whatever's necessary.
We have to go to a different, uh, site?
No, 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 no. We've been on for just a bit now since six, because we had the training. So we just want to give everyone a moment. Prior to going into the information regarding the budget work, workshop, because that, we're gonna sum this up and then go into an executive session. So it's gonna keep up. How that goes. So let's take a couple of minutes. So, everybody go, do what you gotta do. Excellent. I believe we have everyone back. And the thrill is back. So now we will move on to the budget workshop. Vicky, the floor is yours.
I'll follow that. Ugh. Okay, I'm gonna try to share a screen here.
Okay.
Okay, do you see Delanco Township Board of Education?
No, we do not.
Stop sharing my screen.
Flower picture.
I don't do it.
Did that do anything? Mike, I turned it off.
Do we have any advice for Vicky, Albert, any?
When you hit share screen, are you clicking your entire, oh, there you go.
There it is.
There it is.
But are you seeing the right one?
Gosh, I hope so. It's Delanco Township Board of Education, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget workshop.
Okay, I, I apologize for that. We're gonna talk about the budget presentation overview. We'll talk about some historical information. The revenues and expenditures, how they compare. Um, we'll look at budgeted fund balance, how that impact, impacts the budget. Um, also bank's cap and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget development process that we've gone through so far. So for, um, our revenues that we work with are the tax levy, the tuition revenue. Miscellaneous revenue, which would include the library lease, uh, interest on deposits. In the past, it would also include, um, revenue from like the X Care program that we have. We have not been able to run that program due to COVID, so I did not put that back into the budget. Because we don't even know if we'll be able to start that program up in the fall or not. Um, we'll talk about audited excess surplus. State sources of, of revenue are categorical state aid, extraordinary aid, non-public transportation aid. The federal sources are the IDA basic and preschool. I don't know, uh, Mr. Marson, you pointed that out earlier, but we, we're not sure if we're even gonna get preschool aid or not. Um, ESEA entitlements, Title One, Two, Three, and Four, that was brought up earlier, that we get federal funding. Um, this is just a graph that shows you. It gives you a visual of the, the, the revenues that we get. The tax levy is in the blue. The orange is the categorical state aid. I don't know how well you can see this, um, on your screen. And that makes up most of the revenue that, that comes in. And then you'll see the tiny banding at the top is the additional. Small amount of aid that we get. Expenditures, um. Compiled in accordance with the NJ Department of Education School Finance Uniform Minimum Chart of Accounts. The expenditures can be categorized by the following. Um, salaries, benefits, tuition, transportation, other expenses, and capital outlay expenses. And to help, um, with the cost, the district does, um. Participate in cooperatives. So, um, we are in agreements for the telephone, the power and utilities. The, uh, school and office supplies, the cafeteria food supplies, fuel purchases. And property and workers' compensation insurance. Another bar graph that shows the expenses, this blue, uh, piece here is the salaries. It's remained constant. Um, we have not had, um, an increase due to negotiations yet. Um, the benefits are in the orange that will not increase next year. Um, a lot of districts are finding that they're actually not making out with the new, um, educators plan. But we were lucky in that we're staying relatively flat. You'll see tuition has become a greater part of our expenses. This yellow is the facilities and you'll notice that that has gone down over time. It's greatly reduced now, which is concerning. This is the transportation expense that we have for out of district students or for Riverside students. Holy Cross, it's just all of our transportation costs are in that. Other expenses and the capital outlay. Capital outlay is, you know, your fixed assets. And this is just a chart to show you for our total expenses. Extraordinary or categorical state aid covers about this much of it. The local tax levy covers this, the local tax levy and the state levy, the state aid cover this much. And at this point, we have a shortfall in our budget. Budgeted fund balance.
Vicky, before you move on, I just want to interrupt for a moment. If you can go back to that last slide. This is what we are talking about, is the fact that the funding that we receive from various sources is on one trend line. And you see the expenses are on a trend line that is steeper than that. That is not something that the district controls. That is something that the district is impacted by over time. So it's just something that, you know, we've been, we were discussing that related to the township aspect of things and whatnot. But I mean, that, to me, is an important image for everyone to see that funding has not sharply increased as much as the expenses. So, you know, if people want to talk about mismanagement or errors or anything else related to our business office, that is absolutely incorrect. It's that expenses have sharply increased in relation to the funding. So I just wanted to make that clear, Vicky, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, so fund balance is your prior year audited excess surplus. So the 2019-20 school year was just audited. The excess from that will go into the 21-22 budget to reduce the taxes. That impact. You'll see that we're bringing in $470,000 from that into this current, next year's budget. The current budget that we're working on, just for comparison, had $1.1 million in it. So you'll see, there was a huge shortfall in that. And that is because the tuition and transportation ate up that extra funding that we had in there. Banked cap is, its amounts generated in prior budget years when the district either did not go to the 2% increase, like I mentioned before, or they didn't utilize some other kind of adjustment. Sometimes you'll get an enrollment adjustment. If your enrollment goes up a lot, you'll get extra funding for that. Where you can tax, you can increase your tax rate for that. We didn't have an enrollment adjustment this year. Our banked cap in 1819 was $13,405, we used that already. You can only go back three years for your banked cap, and that's why I'm showing it this way. The 1920 didn't generate any, 2021 is generating $65,000. If we want to use that, we would go above the 2%. So this would actually increase it about, it would go to about 3%. And that's the total that we can use for this year. So our anticipated appropriations, again, salaries, we're continuing our negotiations with the DTA. The insurance, there's only going to be a slight increase. Like I said, it's remaining relatively flat for the health insurance. Dental, I'm estimating a 1% increase for our dental expenses. Workers' comp, property casualty just came in today, it's a 3% increase. Increase, I did not get that into the budget numbers that I'm presenting, but I know it's a 3% increase. The PERS appropriation is our portion of, it's the Public Employee Retirement System, it's our portion of the funding for that. And we're keeping that flat at $82,000, like we had to pay this year. Transportation, we have an increase of approximately $100,000 in the budget. And tuition, we have an increase of approximately $500,000. And that number should not surprise you, because you've seen the agendas throughout every month, where we have additional tuition placements in there. And then nursing services, we're increasing that about $90,000. And we will go out for RFP to try to minimize at least the nursing services. But there's not a lot that we can do about the tuition and transportation. So the district began the budget process approximately $800,000 over budget after all the department and building requests were considered. We whittled it down, we took out anything that we absolutely did not need. And it's been adjusted down by approximately $370,000. So we still have another $422,000 to go. The items that have been reduced include tuition allocations, substitute allocations, supplies, benefit allocations, security upgrades, facilities upgrades, technology upgrades, overhead costs, administrative allocations. We are really at the bare bones at this point. Right now, there's a 2% levy included in the numbers. I mentioned we could go to 3%, I did not include that in here. So that could reduce that $422,000 deficit. And so this is where we stand. You'll see this column is the 2021-22 proposed budget. So the tax levy, the increase of 2%, sorry, the increase of 2% will only give us an additional $129,000 to use. The state aid came in a little higher, those numbers came out last week. So that's at 2.7 million, which is an increase of 84,000. Now, that increase is actually, it's actually higher. If you remember back in August, the state took $115,000 back due to COVID. So that 115 is still in this 2021 budget number. So the 84,000 is a little bit higher. But this 2.7 million is what we're getting. Extraordinary aid, we keep that flat, because you're just not sure if you're going to get it. So we don't want to budget for higher and then not receive that, because we'd be in a worse shape than we are. Library rental, in that contract, we are in negotiations right now. But that's going to remain flat for the time being, because we don't have a new contract. That's their annual rental fee. The miscellaneous revenue, you'll see this huge jump here of $235,000. That's the SRR funds that the state just gave us. And those are less restricted than the other CARES funds that we had gotten in the past. You don't, it's not subject to supplant versus supplement. So I just put it in as a miscellaneous revenue item here. That budgeted fund balance, like I mentioned, is $470,000 that's there. So that gives us our total, sorry, I'm clicking on the wrong screen. So that gives us our total revenue of 10.1. And then at the bottom, you'll see what our expenditures are budgeted at. So the 3.7 for proposed salaries, you'll see there's a negative there. It's a reduction in salaries. That's due to one retirement for next year that we know of already. And I was kind of putting in some staffing changes, some experimental items that we're going to talk about in executive session, because we know it's going to impact staff. So I put some of that in there. The benefits, again, would be reduced if the staffing is reduced. Tuition has a slight increase here over last year. Transportation, capital outlay. And there's our deficit right now is that 422,000.
Vicky, I'm sorry, would you mind going back to that slide real quick?
Yeah.
I wasn't in town in between 2020 and 2021, or 2019, 2020, 2021. What is the $72,000 increase in salaries from, do you remember? I know that was a while ago, or were you?
Wait, say that again, what are you looking at?
The salaries expenditures line.
Salaries expenditures, yeah.
1920 to 2021, there's like a $70,000, $72,000 increase year over year. Did something major happen that year?
Well, you do put in, you do budget for salary increases, even if you don't have a new contract. So that's, that's probably what that's for. We also had hired a maintenance supervisor, that might be part of it. We also had moved, we did a little bit of shifting in the supervisory positions. So that's part of that number as well.
Thank you.
So the strategies now that we're going to look at to close the remaining gap would be to use the banked cap of 65,000. We've been discussing opening up an MD program to bring students back in district instead of paying out of district tuition plus the transportation costs. We're looking into preschool expansion aid, outsourcing, some staffing that we have, facility usage and rental fees, renegotiating some contracts for those reductions in travel, which are already at the bare minimum. Supply reductions, which are already at the bare minimum, and personnel considerations.
Vicky, quick question, what did MD stand for on that slide? Open up a new program.
Multiple disabled.
Thank you. And also, just to clarify on that, an MD program is one consideration. It could be autism program, it could be MD, it could be any number of things that relate to different special needs. So MD is just kind of a placeholder for a self-contained in-district special education program.
Thank you.
Is she, I can't hear her.
I had to, I had to put on my headset, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because my daughter went to sleep. So outsourcing, you're talking about the online teachers that would maybe be teaching Spanish and ESL, correct? What is the outsourcing, what are you talking about with outsourcing?
I think if we're talking about outsourcing staff in any way, I think that we would deserve that for a confidential discussion rather than a public discussion. But just to clarify, ESL, we approved a substitute last month. And for Spanish, we're still exploring different options, neither of which are outsourcing at this time, so.
Right now, the term outsourcing, we're not discussing.
I would, I would recommend that we not if it relates to personnel. I mean, personnel is typically a confidential topic.
Please continue.
Does anybody have any other questions for this? And I.
Vicky, it's Vince, from the last slide, the recommendations you're making. Like, you know, I think you know this too, like from, you know, considering all these cuts. I mean, I'm just taking a rough figure, but I imagine I've maybe come up with $100,000 altogether with those cuts alone, you know? Am I about correct on that? Or how much, if we, let's say we, I know potentially, let's forget the MD program, it may take a year to establish or more, right? It's something we could implement very quickly, I imagine. But from the cuts that we're talking about, how much could this take off approximately? I mean, there'd be a significant amount left over is what I'm trying to get at.
We will be left with a significant amount.
Yes.
I have another comment or actually a question. I think in addition to bringing some category of special ed possibly back into the district, are we looking at districts that are closer, nearer to us to possibly put placements in those districts to districts that also have very high quality programs, but the transportation costs might not be as much? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, absolutely. And we do consider that, just so that the board is aware and members of the public are aware. The first consideration is always what meets the needs of the child. So we can't necessarily look and say, well, which district is closer? And, you know, transportation as a first consideration, we don't look at it that way. Say what meets the needs of the child, and then consider other, other aspects of the different programs. But yes, I mean, let's say there's a program that's 30 miles away and another one that's three miles away, and they both meet the needs of the child. It would certainly make more sense for us to say, well, let's consider the one that's much closer for various reasons. But for the, you know, for the sake of the child's bus ride, for the sake of transportation, for all sorts of things. And, but still, that's not the number one consideration. The number one always is, what are the needs of the child?
Joe? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can I be heard? Yeah. My understanding, it's the IEP, the IEP calls for specific, you know, training, you know, education and the other services. So that's directed by the IEP, correct?
Yes, so the IEP is a document that functions in many different ways, including outlining the needs of the child.
Yeah, and then the parent has, if the child's going to be placed out of district, once it's no longer the least restrictive environment, the home district, that in fact, then they get to choose which they think is the most appropriate facility for their child.
Well, what I would say about parent involvement in that is that instead of the parent choosing, that it's a combined collaborative effort between the child study team and the parent, where, and then, you know, this is just something that happens in every district, that the child study team might sometimes recommend something that the parent disagrees with or versa. And that requires discussion. Sometimes, you know, in more extreme cases, it requires steps, legal steps to be taken and so on. The due process that's required. So it is a collaborative effort, because what we want is we want the best placement for the child, and we want the parent to also feel secure and confident that the child's needs are being met. It's, so it's all part of the process.
Like, is it possible to cut busing for kids in town? Or what, or what are your thoughts on that, Vicky? Joe, what do you have?
So travel reductions, I believe Vicky put that on there based on the fact that if we were to set up a program in district, that that would reduce transportation. I also think that if we talk about travel reductions, though, that that's a separate matter when it comes to board members or staff members traveling for training, that kind of thing. So there's, you know, there's transportation reductions, which they're not specifically listed, but she had mentioned it under the adding of the program. But travel is like, you know, like if we're going to go to Atlantic City for the conference, the board decided one year, we're not going to do that to save funding for the district. Or, you know, staff traveling to different conferences and whatnot, we've reduced that as well. You know, I just, I wanted to put both in there, because the transportation students is not listed, but that would also be reduced under certain programs to bring in, so.
Yeah, I guess just to follow up, is it, well, is there any fat we can cut in the, in the transportation at the moment? Imagine, it's okay if the answer is no. But, you know, are we going above and beyond on busing in any way?
That has been explored.
Go ahead, Vicky, go ahead, sure.
I mean, that has been explored in the past, but there are certain routes that are hazardous that you have to bus the students for. And there are students that live outside that range that you have to bus them for.
Okay, I know, and this is kind of a finance committee issue. I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to see if there was, what kind of wiggle room there was, thank you.
Well, thank you, Vicky, that was a very thorough presentation.
Yeah.
The word evaded me for one second. Presentation literally was because of time, so I'm so sorry. Like, my brain was slow to have it come out of my head now. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm assuming the distributions are out, because they were all sent out virtually at this point in time. So there's nothing further that would need to go out. So now we're going to just move forward on to public comment on non-agenda items. And we did receive, I have it, I had to pull it up on my phone so I could see it. The online comment form, fortunately, because Mr. Ari was present, he was able to answer, I feel, two of the three questions or two to three comments that were made. because Mr. Ari was present, he was able to answer, I feel, two of the three questions or two to three comments that were made. But I'll just quickly touch on them just so that we are sure that they were for, like, covered completely. So Mr. Bartlett had mentioned, why are we having internet connectivity issues every week? This has been ongoing since the students started virtual learning in the 2019-2020 school year or perhaps longer. Who is the district's internet provider? And separately, how does someone renew the district's domain name, delanco.com? So it expires and leaves the district without a website and email communication? And why was it only renewed for two years now? Who is managing IT for the district and who is evaluating his or her effectiveness, given that these two basic things have either failed or continued to fail? Oh my gosh. And then let me go back because I hit a button. Sorry, people. Okay, and then let's see, Mrs. Johnson had mentioned, why is the internet connectivity continue to be an issue since virtual learning took place? What are the steps being taken to ensure? I'm hoping that both were present for Mr. Ari's presentation and explanation as to why these issues recently have occurred. What they've been doing tirelessly throughout the school year to help resolve them. And that they are working day in and day out to help avoid them when they can. So unfortunately, at times, some things are just unavoidable, but they're doing their very best. So I'm hopeful that those questions were addressed and were answered and-
And the video of this meeting will be available afterward. So if you missed Mr. Ari's explanation, you can go back.
Thank you, Stephen. I completely, that's very true. And then Mrs. Foley wanted to, to let us know. She said, dear members of the Board of Education, thank you for your time and service on the board. I would like to comment on the Read Across America activities that took place last week at Peterson. So extremely well done and thought out. Each day of the week had a book and spiritware theme. My daughter had a blast and really got into it. As a family, we enjoyed searching through books at home to find and read a book on the theme each night. Also, a few weeks ago, the school celebrated the 99th day of school. Again, there were so many optional and fun activities to go along with the day. In my opinion, children learn the best when they are engaged and having fun, even if that means dressing up like a 99-year-old lady when you are five. Despite all that is going on and the staff being overworked, I truly appreciate them constantly going above and beyond and providing the child with these fun and special opportunities and memories. Thank you. Sincerely, Danielle Foley. That was wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I'll open this up to anybody else that might have a, a public comment on a non-agenda item.
Can I, I, it's Allie Donnelly. I was just, I don't know if I'm allowed to call, I, this is on, this is just about the budget. We just had a question, a question. I had a question. Because the new administration, like the new administration in Washington just came out with this new COVID relief bill. Obviously, a lot of us just saw it and are probably excited about maybe another stimulus check. But it's the understanding that the districts are getting, the districts, each district is going to be getting a lot, some of money for, for K to, well, we're K to eight, but for all K to 12 districts are getting a lump sum of money. Is this something that was already put in the budget for 21-22, or is this just an additional, something that will be additional? For next year, was it put in there? I know it came out today, but I was, like, it was under, I was under the understanding that most districts knew what kind of type of money they were getting. I just was, just wanted to-
It's the SOR funds, then that is included. That was in the miscellaneous revenue line that I added it into. That was 285,000?
I thought it was, oh, okay. All right.
If there's more funding that came out today that they didn't tell us about, then that wouldn't be in there, but I, I didn't give any communication on that.
I don't, I don't think it was included. They're calling this, I think, the American Rescue Plan.
Yeah.
Which is a separate initiative now, so, and, and it did just suddenly arrive today, the news about it. So I don't, I don't know that it's been accounted for. I just know that it, they do talk about Title I. They talk about different aspects of the funding that we already receive. And that has been accounted for, funding that we're, you know, fully aware of. You know, because it's just coming today, there, there is a chance that we could receive some additional funding, yes. It's just we're, it's unknown to us right now.
Okay.
Bern, I see you have your hand up.
Yes. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Something that triggered in my mind when you're going through the agenda was, I think it was P7, 7510, use of the school buildings. Would it be appropriate for recreation to submit? I guess to be able to use the school for the summer program? I know they're putting their, gather their plan for the summer and I guess looking at their fall programs with volleyball, et cetera. I know COVID has played a major restriction, but you know, when I saw that on there, I thought, is it appropriate for them to submit a request?
They, they actually have submitted a request, which at this time, you know, it's unfortunate, but at this time, I've given a response of a conditional no, simply because of various factors, including COVID-19. That doesn't mean that it's a definite no, but it's, you know, we did receive that request. And it's, there are many considerations in place when it comes to the usage of the building in the summer.
Okay. May I ask, who requested permission to use the, the facilities?
It was Aaron Provenzano through the, the Recreation Commission.
Okay, through recreation. But this particular request that's on the, was approved tonight from the agenda, does that is that for someone special or?
It's not a request, it's a policy.
Okay.
There are policies and regulations that were approved, but not, not a request.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else? I don't see any other hands up. Okay. Well, then I will close the public comment section on a non-agenda item.
Mrs. Kamenugian, before you do, I just want to go back to one item. I, I want to thank Jennifer Crozier for organizing Read Across America as well as Mr. Conti working in conjunction. So I appreciate Mrs. Foley's comment and I appreciate Jennifer Crozier and Mr. Conti for teaming up and, and working on that with all the teachers as well to, to have a good experience for our students. So I, I do appreciate that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close it now. It's closed. So now we're good. Just need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss budgetary items related to personnel.
I'll make the motion, Cameron.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Stephen. Anybody have questions or comments in regards to this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Anyone abstain? And it's for personnel. So we'll be going into that separate Zoom link. It is currently 9:13. How long do you think that we will be discussing this important matter, Joe?
I mean, I would say it could be up to an hour to, to go through various details or even, even summaries, you know, but no matter what, it would, it's going to take a significant amount of time to just go through different ideas that, that could be on the table.
Okay, so looking to come back at approximately 10:15, but obviously, these things are not accurate ever. So be prepared. Okay, so let's leave here and go on to the other link, please. Thank you. But, all right, I'm going to make the motion. I asked for the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I was like, oh my God, Stephen, I just can't. Who would second that? All right, thank you.
Who was that? Who was second?
Oh, Stephen, and then it was, um, it was Phil. All right, thank you. Have a good night. I appreciate all the time and effort everyone put in. Thank you.